We are now live on Zoom and on Facebook and on 143. All right, great. Well, welcome everyone. It's 6:02 PM. We're going to begin the regular meeting of the Class and School Committee for Wednesday, December 7th, 2022. The meeting is held in person at the Lane Commons, virtual on Zoom and also virtual on Facebook, but if you're on Facebook, it's watch and listen only. But if you're on Zoom, you are chat enabled. You can provide any comments through the chat feature. So we'll start with our bringing the meeting to order and roll call. I'll go in order. Mr. Kearney.
President.
Mr. Carr.
President.
Ms. Ange.
President.
Ms. McCollum.
President.
And Mr. Dial. Hi, I am present. So we are all here and we are ready to begin. And I will do the flagpole. Ladies and gentlemen.
Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
So we have, I've got a very exciting agenda, at least for me, on two-fold. I did get a little bit of a preview earlier from the administration. We're getting some great data and planning on future curriculum activities way into MCAS, which is very exciting. And also, we have some very special invited guests. We do. I'm excited to get to that. And before we do, I will, as custom, open it up to any public comment. As a reminder, public comment is available for those items not on the agenda. You can let us know now if you have a comment that is going to be on the agenda, so that we make sure to get to you. But the comment should be reserved until the agenda item. Also, as a reminder, we do have the three comment maximum per family. So we'll keep that in mind as well. But with that, I'll pause a beat. And do we have any comments?
We do not have any comments.
All right. I think with that, Dr. Sullivan, are we ready for our invited guests? Are they still preparing?
I think they're preparing. If I may, maybe I could do the school news quick. And then by that time, they'll probably be here.
Okay.
All right, that's good. So first of all, let me just start by hoping, just saying I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving. It was always a nice break. It's one of those holidays that comes, I think, for teachers at an appropriate time. It's nice to take a deep breath, enjoy some family time. And I hope everyone in the community did that as well. We, I haven't had a chance to publicly congratulate the state champion girls soccer team. I was able to talk about our other teams. But the girls had continued on to the state finals and were victorious. And I mentioned this is the second year consecutively that the girls have been in the state finals. And I know last year was a heartbreaker. And I think they were certainly a team of destiny created by a lot of hard work. I was, I was able to go to their banquet and it was just amazing how wonderful, how close that that team is. Coach Beal and her whole staff did a wonderful job with them. And they're, they did win two, they beat Northbridge 2-0 in the state championship. And a couple of ways that they're being honored is, and I want to make sure I get the times correct here, but the girls will be participating in the lighting of the town tree on the town common during the holiday stroll on December 10. So that's good to note. Similar to what our boys' football team did, football team did last year, sort of lead the procession in. And they, they're involved with the lighting of the tree. The lighting of the tree is scheduled for 5:18. Yeah, very specific time. And they're also going to be participating in what's become a co-host tradition of the lobster trap lighting ceremony. An amazing lobster trap tree, of course, at the Old Salt House, which is at 6:30 PM on December 9. So if you have a chance to come out to those two community events, you'll get to see the girls soccer team. A lot of, a lot of awards for them and recognition. I wanted to just update a couple of activities that staff participated in over the last couple of weeks. One was a wonderful Metco conference, which happened, Metco Directors Association Educated Conference. Sent five or six folks to that and they came back with some great ideas and great information for us to add to our culturally responsive teaching initiatives, to our equity initiatives. Very eye-opening. And we're already in the process of sharing some of that information. So I want to thank those teachers who went there. And I'm excited to, to work with them to bring that information to the district. What's that? Oh, Lisa did present. Yeah, Lisa presented regarding scholarships. And apparently was incredible, which isn't a surprise. Anyone that's seen Lisa's speech and saw how great she, wonderful she is. And presenting information was, it was great. So that's, that was nice to have Ro presenting and doing a fabulous job, as she always does. Also, Dr. Sullivan's attended case conferences.
Is connected to channel one. And, and so we had a three-day conference down in Shattam. We took a couple of, three of our reading specialists, our full-time reading specialists. They had speakers for both reading and mathematics. And they have workshops that we go into breakout sessions. And it was a lot about social, emotional wellness of our students and that impact on their academics. And it was, it was really wonderful. We had Pam Allen, who's a literacy guru there. We had Dr. Ray Shaw, who did amazing presentation on mathematics. And just so happens we're reading a book that he had recommended. He had written it. So I was really thrilled. So it was wonderful. Yeah, it was really lovely. And just a nice, nice time to be able to collaborate and meet so many people.
And also a lot of information to bring back to.
Absolutely.
Discuss that as a leisure team today. So excited about that. Also, really excited to have watched the presentation of Juan Junior at the Middle School Musical. It was absolutely fabulous, totally professionally done. It was, it was wonderful. Our kids were shining and clearly this sounds sad. Fabulous job in preparing them. It was great. Really enjoyed it. I brought my daughter with me and she, she was waiting about it when she got home. So really, really great job. That's, that's great to see. And then just a couple of other, other things. We had a Deer Hill lunch. We had, we might talk about this in the subcommittee meetings, but our nutrition subcommittee has now attended lunch at the middle high school, both middle and high school. And also Deer Hill, so Mr. Kearney, Ms. McCollum, so on myself and Ms. Howard, our food service director, had a wonderful lunch at Deer Hill. And I'll let the other group talk about that in a nitty-gritty. But I know we might lose some folks when we actually get to that agenda item. So I just wanted to make sure I mentioned it because it was a good moment.
Yeah, really looking to breathe some new life into the lunch program, especially at the elementary schools. So want to hear more about that? You know, until we get to that point in the agenda.
Great. That's good. And then you may have noticed around the room here that we have some poster boards regarding our sustainability symposium. Every couple times a year, we have our research students in eighth grade under the guidance of Ms. Ruby, our library media specialist, do really authentic exploration into some issues that involve sustainability, whether it be sustainability, environment, or, and they have to work with, as part of the assignment, someone who's an expert in the field. And it's often local experts. So some of the, some of the areas were food waste, organic versus conventional farming, teens and substance abuse and youth sports injuries. So just, just a wonderful event. And that actually brings me to the end of my school news, which I think is well timed, as we have our first group of honored guests coming in here and led by Principal Farrell. Put a little plug in. Yeah, students see you come right up here and teachers right in our circle. This is, I don't know that I've been more excited for a showcase than I am on this one. And I had the pleasure of meeting these wonderful young girls and boys at a lunch that was thrown. It'll never happen. They'll, they'll tell you all about the reasons why. But let me just say how proud I am. And it's wonderful to have them here. We look snazzy. Wonderful. And I'll thank the families also for supporting and being here. And of course, amazing teachers and our incredible principal, Principal Farrell. And I will leave it to Principal Farrell to introduce the group and to take it away. Boys and girls, just relax and have a big smile and have fun. Because you, you're the reason we're all here. So this is just fun. Just have fun. Okay? So I'll let Principal Farrell do her, do her, and introduce the group. Welcome, everybody.
Thank you very much for including us in your meeting this evening. We're very excited. We talked about what the school committee does today when we're making our water bottles. And I would like to introduce all of our fabulous students. We have over 325 amazing students at the Osgood. We have six or seven outstanding students representing everyone tonight. So I'd like to take just a moment to recognize them. And just so Mrs. Farrell doesn't make a huge mistake, we have, let's start with kindergarten. Mrs. Kennedy's class. Ms. Kennedy has Devon Rockford. And Ms. Kennedy, what would you say was the leading factor for picking Devon to be also good phone call home?
So one of the amazing things, there are many amazing things about Devon. Devon is extremely positive. He's very flexible and he's a really great friend to everyone. He just spreads a lot of positives in our classroom. I just love it so much.
Devon, is there anything you want to say about kindergarten? Do you like it? Thumbs up? Fantastic. Thanks.
It's awesome.
And then we have Ms. Cap. Do you have Wes with you?
Yes, I do. This is Wesley Brooks, and he's in my kindergarten class. And Wesley is always a positive role model in our class. He is a great helper and he's always willing to lend a helping hand. And he's especially good at inviting friends to play.
Oh, that's right. You told her that story. Yes.
Yes.
And that's really important because as we all know, kindergarten can get a little tough sometimes because you don't know everybody. And to have a friend just invite you over is outstanding. So thank you. What are your thoughts about kindergarten? You're welcome. Excellent. Very good. So then next we have Samantha Sullivan from Mrs. Caraba's class.
So this is my student Samantha Sullivan, and she was chosen. She stuck out to me because she is a kind, thoughtful, and very creative student who at any moment throughout the day can catch the needle leader and set an example for what it means to be a first grader.
Excellent. Samantha, thoughts about first grade?
It's the best thing ever.
And you don't even have no powers to say that. That's impressive. All right. So then we have Reagan Pace.
Yes. So Reagan, my student. So I picked Reagan because we've been talking about what a second grader role model looks like. And Reagan is the picture of their role model. She is respectful to her classmates. She's always the first one to help. She's also very empathetic towards her classmates. So she is always helping them. And she's on task, which is awesome. She's a really good role model in our classroom.
Thank you, Mrs. Gall. Reagan, what do you think about second grade now that you're finally upstairs?
I know. I like about it because it's fun being the oldest kids in the whole school.
Not that being old would be in seven or eight, right? All right. Then we have, last but not least, but he was our first, first also good phone call home. Connor. Mrs. Jeweler, you get to introduce Connor.
So this is my student Connor, and Connor is the most polite second grade student I've ever seen. And he is very inclusive and always willing to do the task at hand. And he's always really positive.
Thank you. Connor, any thoughts about being upstairs in second grade?
I have to tell you that I had the honor of having, as Dr. Sullivan said, I had the honor of having lunch with this whole group here. And just watching them make the phone calls home to their parents is pretty cool. It's, it's just, you know, they get called down with their teacher. And the first question I ask is who, who do you want to call? And it is very funny to see who goes to mom, who goes to dad. People can't think of anything, anybody that they want to call. So they did, they did a fantastic job. And actually, sitting in my chair with my messy desk, they did a really good job. The also good phone call home represents just those times when not many parents at the Osgood get a phone call from Mrs. Farrell stating there's something wrong. But no matter how many times I call, the first thing I have to say within seconds is everything's okay. Mr. Ralph, the Osgood, everything's okay. This time here, I got to say everything's okay. But I want to tell you that your student is amazing. They were chosen out of, I said, over 330 students. Your student is the one that was chosen this week to represent what it is to be an Osgood student. So it's pretty impressive. I'm very impressed. Parents, can we give you a round of hands?
Do you have any questions for our also good students?
How did it feel to get to sit at this girl's desk and make a phone call? It's kind of like being the president.
They did a fantastic job. And they're more crafty than I am because they do all one model. So I started on Pinterest. I haven't carried out. I'm not, I'm not the crafty person, but thank you. Thank you very much for coming. You can go home with your families and enjoy. Are any holiday specials on? Not yet. But it's probably bath time or dinner time or something. So thank you.
Do you have other questions?
Anybody else? I think, thank you so much for coming.
That's a great job. Congratulations.
And this is, is this something we want to continue through the year?
The whole year.
That's right. So, so if you're watching out there as an Osgood student, here's something you can look forward to. If you just keep doing your job and being the best you can be, you can accomplish what they've accomplished. And I, I'm so excited for the great future you all have. If you keep this up, the sky's the limit, right?
They'll be Mrs. Farrell's chair for a long time then.
I'm so, so impressed by you and impressed by the teachers as well, Principal Farrell. Thank you very much.
I'm going to let them go. That's okay. And I just wanted to share a couple of things for the Osgood spotlight.
Love it. Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much. Can see what you look like on TV.
My daughter, I was like, oh, Mrs. Sullivan. She's like, it's doctor.
She's got a great future. That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much for letting us come. They were super excited. Just a few more things that I wanted to spotlight at the Osgood. We had on Monday evening, we had our also good learning family service for families. I think my thoughts were that it went really well. Should I say?
Yes, please. I'm just gonna read that.
My thoughts were that it went really well. We had about 40 people that presented. Forty, forty people that came. Well, we had certain teachers that I'd like to give thanks to.
Yes.
And I also want to mention that in our series, five, three more nights. So I'll give everybody just a second so I'm not yelling at you.
I think we're going to clear the house. This could be a challenge. Even you can't overcome this point.
Our enforcement.
Super. Okay. And as you were saying.
I will continue. All right. Let me start from the beginning. So we had our first in the series of the also good curriculum evening for parents. The evening was reading and math. We presented the reading specialist, math specialist, Liz Dinerger and Marcia Campbell. And Stephanie Stone presented math and reading to the whole group on the big stairs. And then we broke into grade levels where the parents went to the grade level that their child is in. I was fortunate enough to have my first team, the first grade team, the Ms. Phillips and Ms. Caraba. We had in second grade that were taking students' families upstairs. Second grade, Ms. Diane Barberi and Megan Druzek. And then in kindergarten, we had Meg Stillman and Devon Girard do lessons in their classrooms, which I thought was probably the best pie. The parents got to be the students and realize what it's like to do a math lesson, a phonics lesson. And I can't thank enough, I asked these two ladies to stay because I already wrote them in with their also good student. But I asked them to stay because I would like to congratulate both of them for helping keep the staff motivated, helping keep the families motivated. And Jen McPhillips is probably the only person that can teach me anything when it comes to computers. My own children have tried and I don't do well with learning from others. Jen taught me how to do an e-vite. So for this program here, we had the e-vite that went out. People automatically responded. I was telling Mr. McCollum, I don't know where everybody was on Saturday night at 8:30 to 9:15, but I got tons of responses. Yeah. Oh, I thought there was definitely a party here. It won't happen. All right. Okay. So now, now I know that. I also want to thank both of these ladies for supporting as we try new things. Every member of the Osgood team, the staff, is absolutely fantastic. And we have the next few evenings. So our next evening would be, I got this sample. There we go. February 13th, we're going to do social and emotional. We're going to talk about the blue zone, the red zone, the green zone, big problems, little problems, and just what it's like to be five, six, seven, eight years old in trying to navigate all of that. Mr. Vinton and Ms. Delay are going to be with us. Teachers will be there. And we might even see if we can get a responsive classroom lesson going on. So again, being in the classrooms and seeing what the children see every day and hearing the language. April 25th, we're hoping that we can have another reading night. And we'd like to show, showcase Reader's Workshop and what we've learned in that area and what that looks like. So again, without taking up too much of your time, I did want to definitely thank all of the teachers. Every teacher is going to an evening. The specialists will be having for our May Arts night, which is probably going to be in June. So we'll change that to June Arts night. The specialists will be doing something that evening, not only just with art, they'll do something with PE. And as you all know, or anybody that's been at the Osgood, Mr. Dykes does his dance party. So we will probably have a dance party at night. I did, the only other thing that I did want to mention was thank you for all your support. It makes a huge difference when we have a school committee that is backing us and is interested in what the children are doing. So thank you very much. Have I missed anything? All right. So yeah, I think we're good. The only thing I want to tell you is, and I should have said it before, two things that we have definitely started here, well, there at the Osgood is our word of the day. And today's word of the day was dazzling. So it's a word of the week because we do a word a day. We're not a words. But we're looking for good, meaty, juicy words. And dazzling is this week's word. So I believe my whole audience was dazzling this evening.
You'll hear a little bit more when we talk about MCAS plans and some of the steps. And that's one of the really increasing factors.
May I ask my question? Yes. Fantastic. Mrs. Gall started something two weeks ago. I think it's two weeks ago. Would you rather?
Yes.
And the question is, she asks everybody that comes into the office, students and staff. And then we're going to ask about the school. So on Monday, she starts asking, would you rather? One week it was, would you rather vanilla or chocolate? Of course, we had some strawberries, but it's not a choice. The reason that we do this is because it's, it enforces communication and forces speaking. And it also, why? Why did you pick that one? We start to talk about opinions, what our thoughts, maybe Mrs., Dr. Scollins likes chocolate, but Dr. Sullivan likes vanilla. And then they start to have, it's many conversations. And that's what we're really looking for. But this week, so you have to raise your hand. There's two choices. Two choices is, would you rather live in a gingerbread house? Or would you rather have a pet reindeer? Gingerbread house?
You guys are voting.
You're voting.
We're voting.
This is elementary school. Reindeer?
Reindeer.
Reindeer. Oh, wow. Okay.
Because if I picked the gingerbread house, the reindeer would.
I was just going to say reasoning behind that. So just another activity, just trying to work with the students and with staff too, because the more fun we have with all of this, I think the more it sinks in. And Dr. Sullivan, if you don't mind, I am going to share that on Friday. You have big things going on at the Osgood.
Yes. I'm very excited about that.
He's bringing this reindeer. Would you like to introduce it?
Well, I'll say how honored I am to be the officiant in the marriage between Q and U.
Ooh.
Oh, because of course.
Finding getting together.
It's, well, they're always together.
They've been together forever, but now it's official.
Right. And they're, it's, they're almost exclusively together.
Yes.
But it's, so it's appropriate that they're, they're married.
The officiating. He has his speech. He'll be wearing his attire.
A big deal.
And we have our Q and R U that are going to get married in front of all the kindergarten students on the big stairs. So.
And I, yeah. So, and as you can see, that there's a lot of learning happening at Osgood with joy involved too. So that's, that's a wonderful, wonderful thing. And I should mention just a couple of things about what's been presented today. These are our strategic plan, strategic initiatives, because we've talked about community engagement tonight. And we've talked about recognizing students for not just academic success, but for being good people and making good decisions. And this is a perfect example of Principal Farrell and staff putting those ideas in place in a really fun way. So really impressed and thankful.
I'm very fortunate.
And I'm really excited. I, I actually am really excited about that. It's going to be the highlight of the week if you.
Well, actually, you're there for the wedding and then we're doing Toys for Tots with the police officers.
That's true.
And then the high school's coming over. So the reception of the wedding is going to be fantastic.
It's a big deal for me. It might be just a minor appetizer for Osgood.
Thank you. And have a nice evening.
Thank you.
I just do want to, though, I do want to give Principal Farrell a lot of credit for like working there. I was there. Mrs. Dial, I think was there. I think I saw her there. And it's, I don't think anything's been done like that yet. I have not participated in anything like that. It was excellent. So what essentially was, is you get a hands-on glimpse into what certain lessons are like for your child in the classroom. And I had the, I had the benefit of being in the first grade classroom. You guys were amazing, by the way. Thank you so much. Really, really impressive. I mean, really impressive. I imagine, I speak for any parents that were in there. It left them feeling really confident about the caliber of the teachers that were charging their kids on a daily basis. It made me, I told Mr. Phillips at the time, that made me feel like I had to go back to first grade because they were asking us to do certain things. And I didn't understand what they were talking about. But it was, it was, what it will do is it'll allow parents to have much more engaging and robust conversations with their students about what's going on in the classroom because the parents will have a direct understanding and be able to apply that knowledge to the conversations they're having in terms of like what the curriculum is, what they're learning. So it was really, really awesome. And I imagined that, and it was pretty well attended for the first one, I think. You know, probably about 50, 60 people there in all. I think there were like 20 or 25 in our classroom. And I think it'll be more and more well attended as these things go on in our public side. But thank you so much. And also, not only, it was Principal Farrell's, from my understanding, you sort of conceived this idea. And it's incredible. And thank you for doing that. But also to the teachers who this week now have two late nights. But you know, it takes a lot of extra dedication to do something like that. And like, it, it just, it just clearly shows that you're so passionate about your jobs. And you, you would not know how long of a day you had when you're talking to all the parents. And it was amazing. So thank you guys. And thanks to all the teachers that were there. They're not here right now, but.
I have an amazing staff.
It was a really, really good program. And I'm really looking forward to more of them. I mean, I just can't say enough good things about it. But I wanted to make sure everyone knows what a wonderful program this was and how lucky we are to have these three educators in addition to the other educators that were there that night. Thank you.
I heard you went home and you asked your son a specific question.
I did. I did. And I emailed Mr. McCollum. He has homework to ask us what TAD the Frog, TAD is the mascot for the Bridges Curriculum. And it's, TAD is an acronym. It means Tens Add Decades.
I sent a gold star back.
I'm very impressed.
Well, it's nice to hear how much that's grown because there was a literacy night many years back when we just switched over into like, because there was a huge LA shift and Mrs. Dinerger and something in the library and there wasn't any lesson. And I think there were a handful of us in the audience. So it's wonderful to hear how involved. And I feel like it's one of the positive side effects of COVID is parents become more involved and invested in our, uh-oh, I need to know what's happening. So it's awesome that there was such a good, a good crew there.
It was massive. It's like all.
Right, right, right. Yeah.
And our goal is to make sure that this happens at all levels in different ways. Principal Mills, for instance, had, and his crew did a parent, sixth grade parent night. And it's going to be replicated by a seventh grade parent night.
Coffee. Yeah.
Coffee. And also. So you'll be seeing more of this, this type of thing as we, as we move through the year because it's in our plans. So.
Look forward to it. One of the best things I've seen so far.
Yeah, it was great. Great night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from the committee?
Nice evening.
Take up holidays.
So when you're already, we switched Mr. Thor and Mr. Willis because Thor is not affiliated with schools.
Absolutely.
That's all right with.
So Mr. will do, Mr. Thor. So Mr. Will do, Mr. Thornton, if you'd like, coming up to one of the front seats.
And just, just for context in the committee.
Thank you.
This actually works out better for you because I have another being done.
No worries. Thank you, thank you for being here. Thank you for everything you do in the town.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm not sure if everyone got the initial letter that came with my request. Okay, good, good. I brought copies just in case. So I know this is brought up. Again, my name is Vince Thornton, I live at one oh nine Nichols. But, so on the current C Y B S A president, C Y B S A is what has used baseball and softball association. We recently engaged with the town for the lease of the property over on the Barnes complex, even though we've been essentially managing it since nineteen fifty. So we entered in a lease, ten-year lease. Within that lease, we cover all maintenance and upkeep of the property for C Y B S A activities. So as you all know, the girls' high school softball team, varsity, hopefully current future J D will be playing there as well. I know there were some comments brought up or questions brought up at the last meeting. I don't want to address those to me now or I can recall from the meeting I didn't listen to somewhere.
So I'll, I'll, I'll jump in. The request was to help fund a replacement scoreboard.
That's correct.
And do fifty percent of the funding. The discussion at the committee was given that this was a town field and you want to be supportive. The kind of decision at committee level at that time was that we would offer a third. And I know you and I spoke after that and I think one of the things was whether or not we could find gap funding or you can find gap funding from the town to maybe chip in that extra third or something else. And I know from our conversation that that was not as feasible. So I think the, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to do your request for you, but I think that's.
Yeah, so going back to the official request, so there's two scoreboards that were put in in two thousand and two when the two additional fields were added. Both those scoreboards are dilapidated. We've actually pillaged parts from the Chase Field scoreboard to make sure that the Freedom Field scoreboard was working. And now that's really starting to fall into disrepair. We can't get parts, we can't get L E D lights. The archaic methodology of running the scoreboard is difficult. It's all manual process. You have to plug in a hardwired coverage. And oftentimes, it, you read a number four, but it's actually a number nine. So it's, it causes a lot of confusion. So, you know, looking at the other high school teams that play at Alumni, that play at Milliken, the J D team plays over at Freedom, they all have working scoreboards. It's, it's a phenomenal add just to create a great atmosphere for the kids when they can actually see the scoreboard, especially when they're winning. If they're losing, it creates a challenge, you know, not only consciously but subconsciously, seeing that they're behind. It also gets spectators involved. You get a parent that shows up two innings in, they're trying to figure out what the score is. Some people say it's three to two, some people say it's two to three. You know, it creates confusion. So we'd really like to have the scoreboard rebuilt. And I asked for partnership in, in that the C Y B S A will cover fifty percent and that the school committee will cover fifty percent. The reason why I'm looking for that partnership is that, you know, we have the maintenance of the field from a lease perspective, but the, we are fully behind the Cohasset High School Girls program. Just some numbers, you know, how C Y B S A has affected softball in town. If you look back to two thousand and fourteen, and these were some rough numbers I was able to pull together today with a colleague, back in two thousand, two thousand and fourteen, there were fifty-eight girls in baseball. Last year, there were a hundred and twenty-one. So that's a hundred and eight percent increase in six, eight years, seven years. And we continue to see growth in those numbers. With that in mind, you look at the high school team, which has been a co-op with Hall. Back in two thousand and twenty-one, there were ten girls from the Cohasset team, there were four girls from the Hall team. Two thousand and twenty-two, there were twenty, there were twelve girls from the Hall, from Cohasset, zero from Hall. And I believe this year is going to be twenty girls from Cohasset. And right now, we don't know if there's going to be any girls from Hall because Hall has had difficulty getting their softball team. I think they just started their fall program last year for softball. So I'm not even sure if there's going to be any girls in the program. From a percentage use, it's actually pretty interesting. Looking at just the spring season, we're looking at over sixty percent usage from the Cohasset High School Girls. Now, it seems a little confusing in that regard because the, the program is so robust from a C Y B S A perspective. But you look at the season, the season starts for the Cohasset Girls in mid-March. It can go, if they make the playoffs, until late June. But typically, last year they got eliminated and so they were done in the first week of June. So that's quite substantially longer from the Cohasset C Y B S A program, which starts at the end of April, possibly the beginning of May, and ends the first week in June typically, or maybe the second week. So that's where the, you know, you look at the numbers and you say, wow, how, how, how does that happen? Sixty percent Cohasset Girls. And that's without including a future J D team. So that's what, that's where we kind of ran some numbers.
And so just to give the committee a little background, this is after our meeting, he reached out to me and it was on me, I did not put him on the agenda for when we were going to have a discussion. So I thought it fair to have him come back if he wanted to have, ask the committee to reconsider whether or not we'd be willing to leave that fifty percent part. And I thought it was fairly to his case, in person, especially since he's willing to do that. So thank you, Mr. Thornton.
And I appreciate the time. Thank you for having me.
So I guess if you're complete, I'll go to the comments of the committee, Mr. Carr.
So I think one of the things we didn't focus on, can you tell us about the nature of the lease from the town?
Absolutely. So we had, I asked for the lease about five years ago. And because I've been a member of the board for, this, this will be coming, this, two thousand and twenty-three will be my sixth year on the C Y B S A board. And I've done multiple aspects within and field maintenance is one of my fortes. So when we started looking at some of the activity that, or some of the enhancements that we wanted to do, like we put in girls' dugouts a few years back, dugouts on the Freedom Field. And that was funded by fifty percent C Y B S A, fifty percent C P C. And when we started looking at other enhancements that we wanted to do, we're, we're in the process of doing ADA right now. We wanted to see, okay, when we represent, when we go in front of Concom, are we representing C Y B S A? Are we representing the town? What are we doing if, if we had to go in front of multiple meetings? You know, who actually owns the fields? Who represents the fields? Who's the administrator of the field? So five years ago, I started asking about the lease. And there were critics as far as, you know, looking for it. If you look at one of the old historian books in town, back in nineteen fifty, when the lease was, when the fields were first, what it applied to Barnes Field, they said there was a hundred-year lease at a dollar. But no one could find that lease. So that started the, the role down the hill, so to speak, of, of where the lease started going. And then they started looking at all the properties in town that haven't had a lease in fourteen years. So there are other aspects of enhancements that we want to do to the field that we want to make sure rock solid, that C Y B S A is the manager administrator of the fields. And so that's where the lease.
And so are you response, now responsible for all the costs and upkeep?
Essentially, that's where the lease is written. Yeah, so C Y B S A is there for, well, the only thing, and it's written in the lease that the, that the town is responsible for lawn mowing. And that's it.
That's it?
Yes. So just some examples of what we've done in the past few years. The year of COVID, we realized that the pine, the home plate of, on the Freedom Field was always saturated after a rain. So volunteers from C Y B S A, we had about twenty guys out there digging holes, we built a trench, French drain, rock solid, you know, and now that, now that pine home plate is found. Two months ago, or at the end of September, we realized that the outfield had burned out because of a lot of the drought issues. So another Saturday, Sunday, another fifteen of us spent aerating and reseeding compost fertilizer, the entire field of Freedom. So you can see the grass is starting to percolate and it's really great to see. So come the spring, the girls are going to have a great carpet to play on. You know, we're out there weed whacking when needed, leaf raking, we, you know, fall cleanup, spring cleanup. A few years back, we had a backstop that fell down with, one of the heavy snows, C Y B S A covered that.
And does it prevent you from going to C P C anymore? Because it's a private lease?
No, it's not, it doesn't. C P C is willing to work with us for, they're not willing to do maintenance of projects, but if new activities, so we're working with C P C for the ADA aspect. So they have come through and right now, they're giving us a hundred percent funding for the ADA updates.
But the board isn't.
The board covers all maintenance.
I mean, the board that we're talking about.
Oh, scoreboard, scoreboard is a maintenance issue, yes. Because there's an existing scoreboard, you know, there has been maintenance that has been covered by C Y B S A as far as getting some, a scoreboard company out there to replace the lights, try and get new lights, take pieces from the old scoreboard, put it in the new. But because now this is a brand new scoreboard.
What is a new scoreboard?
Not the one that's there now.
Okay.
We're looking at replace it.
This is the money we're spending is for a new scoreboard.
Correct.
And C P C won't do that or they won't help with that either?
Well, one, it's a smaller dollar figure.
Yeah.
So we like to go to C P C for other aspects. If you recall, C Y B S A led the initiative to renovate the field at Deer Hill.
Yeah.
We, again, were looking to do a fifty-fifty split with C P C. Because it was a girl's softball program that primarily uses the Deer Hill field for softball, even though it is used for other things, but primarily it was going to be used for softball. Because we were running out of field space. And so our fundamentals and grapefruit girls play at that field. And so we led the initiative to renovate that field. See, we went to C P C because again, it's a female, gen, primarily female activity. C P C stepped up and they did a hundred percent of the renovation. So a few years back, again, just another aspect of what C Y B S A does. Even though we don't manage the field at Beachwood, Beachwood is tried and true town field. Several years back, just, just during COVID, we realized that the field was dilapidated. There, the, the pitcher's mound was not, it was not convex, it was concave. The pitcher was actually below ground when he was pitching. So we stepped up and gifted the town ten thousand dollars to renovate that field, not only to be used by Junior League or A Brute, but also by the J D team of high school. And there are other aspects, you know, Special Olympics uses that field as well.
Do you have a question just saying?
Okay. Let's, let's do a question.
So this is from Laura Soderberg from sixteen Black Horse Lane. And Laura writes, given the enrollment numbers that Mr. Thornton just shared, several members of the high school community would like the school committee and administrators to support a Cohasset-only softball team in the near future as we clearly have the pipeline needed to support a team on its own. This is an extremely opportune time to not re-involve the coop with Hall as their, sorry, co-op. Long night, all right. With Hall as there would be no-hall players that would need to be addressed in future years as there were no-hall players on this co-op team. Thanks.
Thank you for the comment. Mr. Kenny, any questions for you?
Well, Vince, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton.
And I also want to thank Eddie Sims as well. What you guys do for the schools is, is remarkable. You know, the benefit too for having these fields, and I was here in two thousand and twenty-three. And you did a fantastic job of like, so the town said to everybody, look, what, I think it was a three hundred thousand donation. And they raised the money, the parents raised the money for twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours, they raised a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we were able to, as a town, rebuild that, those fields. And, you know, my, in full disclosure, my daughters love softball. They are, they are big fans of the program. They benefit from it. The, the program itself, to see it go from fifty kids to a hundred or so. I mean, that just goes to show like how popular the sport is getting. So like when we go to East Bridgewater, it was funny, we lived down there and I was walking through the fields and I saw, we were on our way to the varsity. And our girls are mostly freshmen. At the time, you know, maybe a soft, a couple of sophos, but we lost twenty-five to nothing. And I was hoping that maybe we could play the freshman team as we want because it was three, three fields. And to see these girls just get better and better and better. And, and, you know, they're, they're so team-oriented. They bring up and they support, it's really a supportive group from all the way from T-ball all the way up through the system. And to see them all in the same uniforms and to be able to, be able to put that new school and rebuild the school at Deer Hill, which now allows kids, because we would run later and you'd see kids waiting to play and that kind of was, it was too bad to make sure because these kids got to play at daylight time and all that. To see that, it was awesome to see you guys do that. And just so we understand like where the money's coming from as well, like, that's why I would like to see us chip in the fifty percent is because, first of all, it's not a big ask. Second of all, it's like, we don't really do anything for the fields, as you were saying. Like normally, if that was here in our ball field like Milliken, you'd have to, you'd have to upkeep, upkeep it. These guys do a great job, men and women do a great job of keeping these, these fields in the conditions they are. And to be quite honest with you, with some of the things that are going on with this school and, you know, there's some of the maintenance problems that we got to issue. To go to that field, it's, it's, it's a breath of fresh air. It really is. It's the experience, it's the, it's the whole field. So that said, and as far as the financial end of it goes, you know, these parents are all paying, I'm one of them. This is one of them. We're all paying into a fund, the athletics budget as well, that you pay for kids to participate. And then when, when it comes to raising of C Y B A, it's, that's also parents raised. And I contribute to both. That's why I'm saying it is, it's not really a big ask. So with that in mind, I, you know, I would suggest that we take a look at just getting it done and moving on.
Go back to Mrs. Soderberg's comment. And I mentioned the numbers where, you know, Cohasset is taking over, you know, as far as the roster of the high school. You know, twelve this year, probably twenty this coming spring. You know, so right now, we rely on the A D of the Hall for the co-op because they are the primary in the, in the relationship. So we're the guest and Hall is the primary. So falls on the ADA program of Hall. So they direct, you know, the funding that goes for, you know, transportation, I believe, or there might be a split on the. And coaches pay, exactly. But historic, you know, C Y B S A has actually covered the chalk and the paint that goes in for fields as well as baseballs and other equipment that high school uses. So they're very supportive. And also from a priority base, if they have a game, home game that's played and is going longer than scheduled, C Y B S A sits on the sidelines and waits for that game to complete. At which point, you know, games are delayed and we sometimes have to cancel some of our programming because of the delay.
To Mrs. Soderberg's point, I, I believe there's some movement in that direction. But I, I don't want to speak out of turn.
Well, it's a different point altogether, right? Sure, I have a motion.
Well, just in case there's any other, any comments, questions?
I just want to thank you for coming. I know a lot of the pushback on the point before was from me because I felt like we didn't have enough information and, and I appreciate you bringing it tonight so that you know, kind of that percentage of usage and any other information makes the decision easier.
Thank you.
Yeah, just on the basis of the details shared about the C Y B S A's funds, we're doing the lease and also the amount of money you issue, I'd move to modify the school's contribution to fifty percent.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I ask a favor?
Absolutely.
Do you think this is really easy for us to decide on stuff like this? For in the future, if there's stuff needing our help, can you just think well in advance of what it might be from the schools and just, you know, kind of work through the, you know, the processes? These things take time. So, you know, whenever, if there's something in the future, as soon as you're like, hey, we ought to go talk to the schools, that's the time to come. Knock on the door.
Yeah, I know, and I submitted the letter to Mr. Thornton and, and, you know, that got transferred over to Mr. Dial, so. And I wasn't aware that it was going to be, you know, conversed at the, at the last meeting, so. I appreciate you allowing me to come back and speak and give you some of the details.
Thanks very much, Mr. Thornton.
And come on down and watch a game?
Yeah. Appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.
Lance, and maybe in future time, you could probably do it maybe as an agenda to talk about it.
Yeah, I don't, I'm, I'm, my thoughts were exactly what Mr. Thornton said, that's not.
Right, I get it.
I'm not, I, I think.
If we could table that.
Very fertile, uh, ground.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, like, because it's, because Hall does care.
And Mr. Willis, I think you've been patiently waiting, so thank you.
I didn't have to go up to the kids.
Want to publicly congratulate Mr. Willis and the soccer team had a great season.
Congratulations.
Thanks. My name is Jim Willis, I'm the sixth to twelfth history department chair at the high school and I'm here to ask. uh, school permission to um, or by, I believe would be tenth, ninth as a leader, tenth overall uh, trip to Europe with students in the April of twenty-four. It is a trip to France, Switzerland and Italy includes um, goes from Paris to Normandy and back to Paris again, and then down through Lucerne to Venice and Florence. Um, it is an open uh, open trip to class at high school students. Um, does have a number cap um, based on busing space.
This trip takes time to plan.
Yeah.
That's why it's usually two years ahead.
My goal is I always try to do a year and a half ahead because if I can, A, I'd like to, there's always a um, families get up to two or three hundred dollars off if they sign up by January first. So I would present this relatively soon to them if they give them permission. Um, and also I like to give families over a year to plan. You, it's not something you have to pay for upfront. Kids can pay for over the whole, you know, time period leading up. So it gives kids who want to organize fundraisers time to do so, families that want to pay monthly can do that. Um, and it a lot, it just gives a lot more flexibility in terms of uh, all the time, gives us time to, you know, if your kids decide they don't want to go to pull them off and get kids off the waitlist. Um, and it, and it ends up, you know, we, we, we filled them all recently. Um, they're usually pretty in demand. On the other hand, we, it's been nice. We like last two ti- last two trips. I think our waitlist was three, four, five kids and all of them ended up getting in because of people's changes at the last minute. So um, you know, it's been a successful trip in the past. We had a fantastic time last, last April. Um, the flights, the, the airlines put me through it, but EF, the, the company itself and the tour was outstanding. And uh, the uh, now that I've dealt with the airlines, I had to take fifty people and divide them up into five flights over and then four flights back and made it all work. And now I feel like I can run a mail. That cost is what it is upfront right now, the forty-six, fifty-nine. It will, um, any student who signs up by, there, there's a hundred dollars off if you sign up by January first and a two hundred dollars off if we get forty kids. We've had over forty kids every, so that, that's probably going to drop three hundred dollars for anybody who signs up soon.
Um, we also should mention, Mr. Willis, and you may not know this yet, but we're working on an overarching uh, system scholarships for these types of trips um, that should defer uh, costs across the board. So that's exciting too. And this would be a trip that would definitely benefit from that.
Yeah, that, that's actually, I mean, I'm kind of surprised, like our last three trips have come in just over four thousand. Um, I know the trip that's going on this April, the Columbus is just over four. Uh, with the way costs have gone up, I was actually surprised that we were going to get it. And I think, no, I don't organize fundraisers myself, but I will, I throw it to the kids. If you want to do it, I'm happy to help and, and, and your ideas are, are, you know, by the hand, if you want to do it. And I kind of leave that up to kids in terms of what they want to do. Um, I choose EF because it's the most affordable. Most others uh, travel companies are a little bit more expensive. Um, but EF, you know, that, they, they save money because we're not right in the middle of the city and we're not getting the best meals in the world, but we're getting there and, you know, it's, I, I can, I can, I can take care of the rest. I, I particularly, I specifically designed this tour. I took some of their existing ones and put it together. Um, and uh, it's going to be a good experience.
Meals are pretty good to me, Mr. Willis.
The meals are great. They're, they're, you know, they're, they're fine. We, the, the, the trip pays for breakfast and dinner every day and the kids have an opportunity to get lunch on their own where we go and we always give them a chance if they want samples of stuff.
Any question for the committee, Mr. Carr?
Well, so I'm, you know, just saying, you know, education first is a powerhouse organization. It's headquarters here in Massachusetts. This is, you know, a high volume player and they run exceptional programs in schools. They have a nonprofit business school and now an undergraduate school here in Massachusetts. It's a great organization. Um, and frankly, you know, even when it's outside of town, I mean, to see Venice, they're staying in paddle, what a historic place to go. So we've been, I mean, this is great. Thanks for doing this.
Yeah.
Did they give a twin or something?
My twins are watching this right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't have much uh, choice here, my decision for them. But uh, I so appreciate you doing this. This definitely scares me when my kids in a different country, not gonna lie. Last year I did hear some kind of um, little waves, but to see you guys come across like, they didn't know what was going to happen and it happened. So I, I, you know, I do trust you and I do trust the school to uh, again, I, I, I'm super nervous though, to be honest, I really am. I lied to you. So, but the other thing is, is this gives them what they, they want. They want to do, this is something they're really excited about doing and they want to get jobs and save up during the summer. So, I mean.
It's amazing how many, it's amazing how many of them have uh,
Yeah, we were thinking about like getting close, like, we're, because we're kind of helicopter parents. So we would be like, maybe the next uh,
Let the sword, Mr. Kenny.
And that's, and that's the reason why I don't take parents as
Yeah, yeah.
But I think, I, I do.
It is some.
Yeah, there is, it's, it's, I, one of the things I tell parents by the way is like, I mean, as a camp director for years, I've been saying, I, I get it. You're, you're handing me your most prized possession in the world as you're saying, break.
Yeah.
And it's, it's harder when you're going across the, across the ocean. But it's just, I can't, like, there's so many, I can't believe how many former students are now, like, before college or in Europe now and made that decision because of previous trips.
That scared me. No, I, I do get that and I do appreciate uh, that.
Last year when we were in Paris, we had a flight problem. We ended up having to, I, I had to stay with, I had to stay with twelve kids overnight in Paris for, because the, our second flight got canceled. And actually, uh, one of my travelers is, his brothers who had traveled with me before is at school in Scotland and he and his mom came and met us for dinner in Paris. But in the end, it all, it all has just been a, it's been an unbelievable experience watching, it's watching what it does to them, like, emotionally and then just how they open up. It's pretty.
Say no.
Um, as always, I one hundred percent support trips. I did so many when I was at Massamai and um, I think it really led, like you're saying, like it led into what I have done with the rest of my life. So it's really important. I know it makes you nervous, Mr. Kenny, but I think that's the best possible thing, right? Be nervous and trust your kids and let them go and have these experiences. Um, I also used to work for you though, so I do also trust that. I did, yeah, I thought it all. Um, no, I just think this is awesome and I appreciate you organizing it and giving the lead times so that everyone can kind of plan ahead and have a payment plan, well with me in the plan. Um, so, thank you.
Mr. Carr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, so um, Mr. Willis, thank you so much for doing this. I, I um, I benefited from a number of EF wars when I was in high school. I had a bit of class high. But um, with BCI, we uh, we did a few um, around all kinds of places in Europe and with, with the chair, the district department there. Um, so I know, uh, I know what we were up to and I know how hard it was for those teachers to keep an eye on all of us. And uh, I, I, I just, I even felt stressed for them as a kid. So um, thank you for doing that because it made a huge difference. I mean, I got a lot of great experience out of that and it's a huge uh, responsibility. So thank you for taking that on, really, on behalf of the district. Um, I am, I'm, I'm, I always ask security related questions that you can't actually answer right now because you don't know exactly how many kids you're going to have on the trip. Um, you don't know how many of the chaperones are going to be. So um, I would just ask you, um, I, I, listening to everyone's comments, I imagine we're going to approve this. But I'd ask that the approval be subject to your submission to the superintendent's, um, when you have more details um, as to uh, who the chaperones are and what the plans are surrounding. It's, it's not your first rodeo, you've done this, but what the plans are surrounding passports and monitoring and hotel rooms and site creation agendas and, you know, there's going to be different gender chaperones, things like that. Um, just so we have those details because, you know, I don't want to have you have to come and, you know, and meet, you know, sit at a school meeting again. But it would be comforting if the superintendent could share those details for us when they can available to you.
Absolutely.
Um, and I will just echo the remainder of the committee's comments. This is, these are great life experiences. I share uh, my chairman on concerns, safety. So um, with that, I'll ask if there's a motion and if so, it's along lines of um, as described by Mr. Carr.
I, I'll make a motion as I just described.
Second, this motion is described.
All right.
All right, let's go, let's just go around. Mr. Carr?
Aye.
Ms. Kenny?
Aye.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Carr?
Aye.
And I, and I, and I approve.
Thank you.
Mr. Willis, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Twenty-four, have fun in Europe.
Thanks for waiting too.
No problem.
Okay.
All right. So I think that gets us through our invited guests. We've done school updates. Uh, so that moves us on to our teaching and learning uh, section, uh, where we have, I understand, a uh, detailed presentation on the school's MCAS action plan. So I'll turn it over uh, to Dr. Stone.
True, and I actually have the pleasure of sort of beginning this uh, by
Turn it over to you, Dr. Stone.
We're, we're going to work together on this as we, as we did to get the presentation. But um, I just want to say that it was a uh, good, a really good and healthy exercise for us to put together a formal plan based on activities and initiatives that we, we have been putting in place for the last few months. And um, it also led us to some more reflection, uh, and some of it's very timely into, you know, what, what, what our needs are moving forward. So um, we're excited to present this and very thankful to the community to, uh, you know, remind us of the importance of this. So we're uh, we're very, very tuned in with this particular presentation. Um, if you just go to the next slide, I'll just sort of highlight the um, the format of this. So we're going to start off by talking a bit about our district-wide MCAS initiatives. In other words, overarching, like, what are we looking at in terms of our needs, our hiring requests, our professional development? Uh, then we're going to move towards our district database action plan. So what is our approach to using the data? How are we disaggregating it, looking at it, separating it, um, working with teams uh, to unravel it so that we can get to our plans for students? Then we're going to look at what those plans are. And those plans involve uh, key actions, benchmarks, our school base, and that's grade level and subject specific focus areas based on the MCAS analysis. So that really is where the rubber hits the road, what we're doing this year based on the data that we presented. And um, then we're going to look at our students with disabilities at, at MCAS and sort of our approach to uh, to making sure that all students get what they need based on the data that is presented to us. So uh, the first request, and I should mention that um, this is not really a, a new position. It's a new position, but it's not, it, it's one that will um, fill in for Lisa Raden, who will not be with us next year. She moved to a different, different position, as I mentioned, to the, to the committee. And when we did hire Ms. Raden, the arrow was really pointing towards that position as being vital for us. We, we hired a director of technology and digital. Of course, we were entering COVID, we were fully online. At one point, we are hiring her. We needed significant help with that. Much from her efforts, we've built underneath her um, some levels, some layers, one of, one of which is a um, a support position specialist, technology specialist at the middle of a high school. And that pairs very well with our specialists at the elementary. And we've built in um, a plan for our computer science pathway moving forward. And really, we're, we're in a good spot. What we need though, is a more granular look at data. And someone who is going to work very closely, this is the pitch here, someone who's going to work very closely with Dr. Scollins, with Mrs. Solanka, with the principals, with our specialists, with me, with staff, and with families too, to look at data and to really tie that into the curriculum, which of course is then overarching sense by Dr. Scollins, but making sure that the data and curriculum, and then what's happening in the classrooms are all matching. And someone that can coordinate this with Dr. Scollins, K through twelve. That is what this position would do. So this would be very much someone who would be setting individual plans with staff based on data, leading data dialogues, and also helping to evaluate staff with, with um, principals in the classroom. So that's something that we feel, we all, the leadership team feels we need. It's, it's a more granular look uh, and, and effort to make sure that all of these things are happening with fidelity and that they're all that right here. So that's the first position that we're advocating for. We're also going to be advocating and you'll receive this, this full list as we move into um, budget season, which is coming up in the next meeting.
This is a good time to clarify, we're not requesting, you're not requesting approval for these positions at this meeting.
No, no.
This is the, the plan.
Yeah, and this is, this again is an overarching, this, this is sort of some district needs and then we're going to get into some of the actions we're putting into place. Um, next year, for next year, moving forward, based on the data we have, we're going to be requesting uh, the hiring of a high school math teacher. If you remember, you supported the hiring of a math specialist. And right now we have a model in our sixth grade where we have an ELA teacher who's um, sort of working to bring down the, I'll let Dr. Scollins know that.
Yeah, because um, what he was, uh, Spencer Mills was able to do was take that um, teacher and open up sections of the, the sixth grade, so it allows for smaller class. Um, and therefore, uh, when you do that, obviously then there's more individual attention. And so, um, it's been really helpful.
And we're, we're aware of the needs of the current sixth grade based on some data. So this would free up our math specialists to do a little more work.
Right, to do that. So that would again happen for that grade, right, seventh grade, for next year. Um, give you more smaller class size, same for the sixth grade. But, and then in addition, there's also time for that teacher to do, which is what's happening now. I know that the English teacher's doing some leadership things. But this, this teacher in math would also be able to do more um, support by pushing into other classrooms, also be able to do small group instruction. So it really opens up um, some nice opportunity to really look at those areas that we need to target.
Yes, and, and bouncing off of that, if you look at what, what our needs are at the um, at the elementary level, we did quite a bit of work supporting literacy over the last couple of years. This position at each, at each building, a point five at Osgood and eight point five at Deer Hill, we're, we will be asking for a teacher, um, certified math teacher to work with students in intervention format, specialist format, um, where they're really helping students who, who are struggling. And this will pair very nicely with our current math specialists who are doing a lot of coaching and a lot of working in the classrooms with students. This will make a really pieces of a, of, I think, a nice supportive puzzle. Uh, and I think the data, data backs this uh, this, these additions. Um, at the high school, um, we are still working to try to figure out the best way to go about this and we plan to have that answer for you on the, and again, these are future things, but this is a future one, um, on the twenty, by the twenty-first. Um, we know we need some support in math at the high school. The question is, what's the best format for that? We're looking at, you know, there's a possibility of putting in an integrated math course. Uh, there's a possibility of having a specialist, but we're trying to get the best bang for the buck and the best bang for that position. How would that person be used within the schedule to support students? So we want you to know that we're going to be asking for something. We just aren't quite there yet, uh, moving forward as to what that will be, which will be in the next few weeks. Um, and again, this is all big picture uh, information. There's some, there's a lot we're doing right now for students who need this right now. So uh, we wanted to start the presentation by looking at that. And part of, part of what we're looking, moving forward is to continue, and again, this is, this is overarching. But to continue the professional development, we've provided uh, teachers in uh, literacy through TLA. But some, all of the uh, the work that they're doing will help with the data that is in MCAS. You'll see that specifically spelled out in some of the action plans for this year. But also know that we're sponsoring some, and this is the second bullet, we're sponsoring some great professional development with our reading specialists to work with other reading specialists in the area throughout the state to talk about best practices. One thing's for sure, teachers learn from other teachers and ideas that are shared are really rich and everyone is in the same position pretty much where we're all playing some catch up and we're all trying to do what's best for our students. where we're all playing some catch-up and we're all trying to do what's best for our students. And to, to provide them with that format to be able to speak to other reading specialists such as this. This is a, this is a, a great, a great opportunity for them. So I wanted to make sure that everyone knew that those things are ongoing.
Right, and it has to do with sustainability, too, right? We're rolling out this comprehensive reading approach. We wanna make sure that Reader's Workshop is sustainable once our consultants leave us. So making sure that we, make sure that our reading specialists feel confident and know what their roles are in that situation is extremely helpful and it actually.
And, and this is really high-quality, embedded professional development. So that, that's a, that's an important thing. Next, just a little bit on what our district database action plan, or what is our approach with data? And what have we done so far? And Dr. Scollins has led a, a great, a great deal of this, as, as Mrs. Solanka with her department. But analysis ongoing with core teaching and special education staff regarding the results, the district, school, and student results, item analysis, and disaggregated results with teaching staff, including special education teachers. So Dr. Scollins has met with every group at this point, every grade level, every department.
And that will continue on.
And that will continue on. And of course, we are doing the, the, you'll see as the last bullet there, we have our math curriculum review process. So this is really big information that they're using in that review process to make sure that we're attending to the needs that are clearly pointed out in, in the MCAS data. But really continuing opportunities for students to practice answering a variety of types of questions and assessment measures and to practice test-taking strategies. There's a great deal, you'll see what we're doing specifically, but there's a great deal that students can, can gain from knowing how to take a test and knowing how to take this specific test, particularly as it's computer-based, and there's some tricks to the trade there. And as we did some analysis, we realized that there's a lot we could have gained just by having them learn these, these techniques. So that's part of it.
Exactly, and you know, our students, you know, we see them on computers all the time and they're in Google Classroom. Different than being in a platform such as the Pearson Platform for the MCAS. There's some, and, and that practice has happened. It's not like it wasn't happening. I think that we probably need a little more, right? And some other ways that we can help students, I'll show you the expanding box. So, you know, things like that, that can really help kids. It'll take that off the table for them, they'll be comfortable with it, then they can really focus on the questions. What are they asking me about, rather than how do I do this? So that'll be helpful.
Excellent. So again, just continuing, continuing focus on strategies which promote critical thinking, problem-solving, writing for a variety of purposes. These are all important information right from MCAS language that we need to make sure that our students are doing every day. Use of teacher goals, really looking at our teacher goals to make sure that teachers are focused in on, and leaders are focused in on the information that is being shown to us through the MCAS. That's an important capability feature, but I think it's also where we are. And, and we, we wanna make sure that we're building the, the learning of our students through, through, through our goals. We always have used Title I programming to support eligible students. That will continue, continual refinement of our MTSS process. We've spoken about that many times, that ties directly into MCAS data. And then at the high school, right now, we're currently doing educational proficiency plans for any high school student who is partially meeting or lower in a subject area. It's already, they've already been created. We'll talk about what those plans look like in a moment. And communication has already gone home to all of us. So that will happen going forward and it's happening now.
Correct.
So I think that's.
And, and Principal Scott, you know, sent out, he'll be sending me out. Like, most students probably got them, but just in case a couple, there's, there's something, maybe some more coming out there. But he was communicating with families, and that's not really required, but next year. So she's ahead of her.
So I'll turn it to Dr. Stone.
So when we were looking at the data, we, you know, typically in, in past, pre-COVID, when looking at MCAS data, I would really look at where would be eighty percent meeting and exceeding expectations when I looked at questions. And, and you would normally typically look at anything below that, working with your staff. And, and this, this data is a little different. So we know that we're coming out of COVID. So I would have, I would look at, and I will be looking at seventy percent of them. Like, okay, we're okay. But I, but I really wanted to drill down on some of the places where we weren't really, we were either at right at the state level, right above the state level, right below the state level and meeting and exceeding expectations, and decided to focus on that area. Because if I did all, it would be too much, and we wouldn't be able to get to where we really need to go. So I wanted to really narrow it down. So when we're defining the focus area, we're looking at MCAS anchor and grade-specific standards. And I'll show you what that looks like on the next slide, where the items, item analysis indicated that the students were not meeting our high academic standards. We know that we want all our students to be at the top, right? But we needed to define and narrow it a little bit. So anchor standards are the overarching standard in the subject area. And then the grade-specific standards are all those elements that comprise each anchor standard for each grade level. And sometimes they are the same throughout grade level, it's just the depth from which they are taught, maybe a little bit different, the language may be the same. So if you look here, this is grades K through five, and I put K through five together. We all know that MCAS happens three, four, five. However, everything that K two does supports what happens three, four, five, and all the way up to twelve. And so although they're not in the same school, the kids feed into the school above them. We need to make sure that what's happening at K two is gonna support our, our students.
If I could just mention, just to re, re, just to emphasize what this slide shows, these are the areas that we're really focusing on based on the MCAS data.
Right.
These are the standards that we're focusing on specifically. Doesn't mean we're not looking at other things, too.
Correct.
This is our major focus.
Right, and so again, these were where we were slightly above at or below the grade level and looking at, at the, at the data.
One of the purposes of this presentation is that it's twofold. One is that it's going to be put, we're gonna publish it, put it on the website, put it in the newsletter, so that anybody who hasn't seen this presentation can look at it and can understand it in, without context. So although we won't talk about every single thing on this page, we wanted to put it in there because we wanted to be sure that people can access it. But we may highlight certain things.
We will, so I'm gonna take you through this slide so that you can see what I'm talking about. Then I'll get highlights on the other pages, because otherwise we'll be here something. So, so if you can see right here on the top, I have my cursor there, right? So it said the writing anchor and then the grade-specific standard. So the writing is the anchor standard. And the anchor standard here is, in writing, text types and purposes. The grade-specific standards are below, write narratives in prose or poem form to develop experiences or events using effective literary techniques, descriptive details, and clear sequences. Again, another one below, here is the, another grade specific, and then what's happening. And then below is the item description. And three through five needed to address, write a story describing what might happen next in the passage. There's a variety of ways the students answered that question. Some summarized, some gave a little bit of information, some didn't give any evidence as to why the story would unfold the way they decided. So we're gonna focus on that. And then next, you can see the reading anchor standard and then the grade-specific standards. Again, here is integration of knowledge and ideas, and then here is the grade specific. And then in this particular case, you can see, although the standard is the same, this was the item description from the assessment that was different for each grade. So grade three, identify similarity using information from the article. Grade four, identify what topics several, several details from the passage are related to. And five, make an inference about a character based on details from the passage. And then, as you can see, it gets, right, it, it becomes more difficult and more involved as they come along. I promise it won't be as detailed in the next, but you can see, writing is definitely, and you'll see that across the board, writing is an area, it was across the state, but also for us. So, yeah, yeah, something about state, but most importantly, we need to look at it.
And if I, I can't just clarify, if you could just go back quickly, because this is, um, this, this format will go through, but just to make sure I understand, you've got your writing anchors, this writing, and the text types of purposes, that's, this is your focus area. This is the thing we're trying to improve on. And the item description, this is where, this is kind of almost like the MCAS question.
So it is, if you look, it will be, that's the item description on the data that we pulled from the question.
So these are.
It's not the actual question, I'll show you some questions. This is just really where it falls in.
The related standards.
Yeah, okay, and then that's.
Based on what, so the data points where we fell short in our estimation from where we'd wanna be.
Yeah.
These are the related standards.
So these are the, these are the areas you found in that, close to the average.
And to, and to help out maybe a little bit more so, grade three, identify similarity using information from the article. That's a skill.
Yep.
Right, so that's what they're looking at when they say item description, this is skill.
And that's what we're practicing.
Yes.
All right, great question. And then when we continue to look at our writing, we looked at our language anchor standards and the grade specific along with knowledge and language. Although the focus was on for grade five based on MK, MK, sorry, MK data, as grade three and four are not graded on these particular standards. So when we're looking at open responses, they're not necessarily graded on the conventions. But it should be noted that we are all looking at our conventions, because that's so important in making sure that our kids do have strong proficiency in conventions of standard language, English, and knowledge of language. So we correct them along the way, but when they're writing in those first couple of years, they don't want the kids to get hung up on some of those conventions, they want ideas. But we're, we're gonna make sure that our kids have all of those. And so these are the conventions that we, convention, conventions, I know, some, thank you so much. Anyway, exactly, there's a lot here. And so that's some of the things that you've heard about, talked a little bit about what Mrs. Farrell was talking about, some of the things that are related. So when we look at the question here, sample question for ELA, they will get passages to read, there will be multiple choice questions that they fill out, and there will be an open response. One of the things that's interesting is, and this comes back to just learning how to take an assessment, these are two articles, so grand old tree. Then they must click on how the forest grew so that they can read that article. They have to toggle back and forth, answer questions, and then if you look over here.
Scroll down.
And they have to scroll down, and then over to the right, you see that they're gonna type in their response. And they have twelve hundred characters. This box will handle twelve hundred characters. Sometimes kids see that box, that line at the end, which you can't really see in this picture, and they just stop typing because there's a line there. So, so anyway, so we're gonna work with them, even though there's practice, it's, it's not, they're not used to that. Because when they're in Google Classroom, they just type away, there is no limit.
No box.
So anyway, so there's, there's some strategies that you can do with kids, teach them how to do that. And so we'll be working on those. And I've talked to Principal about allowing them to practice. Here's a, a grade four, very similar. This is just one passage, but again, they'll have questions, they'll have an open response, twelve hundred. And then grade five pops up to twenty-five hundred characters. And this is when they're really gonna start looking at the grammar, spelling, punctuation, all those pieces. So what are we gonna do? So here's some actions and benchmarks. And really looking at the improvement of our open response questions, you know, practicing the reading comprehension by identifying information to support their answers. They can give us like what, why they, you know, what they are thinking, but not necessarily supported with the evidence from the article or the, or the reading that they were working out of. Simple test strategies, like highlighting relevant information, evidence. You can highlight within this platform, you have to practice highlighting, because you can't, they can't use a pen or pencil, right, because it's all online. So just some of those things, comparing and contrasting to readings and pulling that information. Again, this is all the way up, all the way through high school, but certainly a big focus at the elementary level. The Deer Hill, they revise their fall writing prompt assessment to reflect that narrative from the grade five with that reading response. And that allows them to really practice that piece and then around completing the request to what happens next. And then K two, you already heard that Principal Farrell said, would you rather? This is a big strategy that's being used, not only in literacy, but it's being used in math, because it really gets you to be thinking and justifying your answers, allows you to have opinion, evidence, getting pieces of your vocabulary and your math skills also, so they're gonna use some graphing with it. But it's also used in math, would you rather have a bucket of dimes or a bucket of quarters? You know, things like that to get the kids to really be thinking about and, and, and not sort of just giving them an answer. And she's also going to do a read aloud at the Osgood, where kids are gonna hear the same book. There's going to be questions to make connections. I don't know if you know that Principal, actually, both our elementary principals are former reading specialists. So that really lends itself nicely. And they'll have some of those skills that we really want those younger ones to practice from a developmental perspective, and then, you heard that we worked. So here's the prompt that was used at Deer Hill. And they took, they just chose a book that's appropriate and just fashioned it right after the other prompt.
And it's a great tool to be able to go back and look at their responses, share their responses, see what they could do better with, and then replicate it in, as needed in future examples.
And they'll use the MCAS, yeah, exactly. And there's an MCAS writing rubric, so they're gonna use that to be looking at students writing. And there's also a webinar next Monday. So we will be waiting with faded breath to hear from, from Desi about what the expectations are, because everyone has this question, why were those grades so low? Why did you grade where you graded? And they're gonna set our expectations for us. And then you can just see some of the things that we're already doing to support word study, which is imperative piece to show this ability to read fluently and then, and write effectively. So all of those pieces are in there. And then we have Reader's Workshop, which actually, the resource we're using in the study actually has a focus on standardized test preparation. So those are supplementary units that the staff's going to use. And then computer-based MCAS writing practice, really just learning how to do it and use the tools in the platform. And there is an avenue for, for students to use that. Then we move into math, and again, it's set up exactly the same way. And you can see that I did divide this up a little bit because the standards do, they spiral, but at the same time, not as, when you're looking at the ELA standards, they're, they're pretty much in the same, they're the same. But you hear it's a little bit differently. So you can see the fractions and things that we were working on, and some interesting things about the data. And you look at grade four, grade four did really well in general, both ELA and math. And so I was looking, and they had this question in geometry that was really low. I was like, wow, so far below the state, why is that? So then I said, well, let me go back into the geometry standard, and let me see, draw the diagonals. Okay, let me see, well, there were three questions in that standard that were asked. That one question that flagged me, they did really poorly on. And then the other questions, eighty percent of our kids were meeting or exceeding, and one of them was a hundred percent of our kids, so they answered it correctly. So when I, I did actually took the math standards and what happened for the math specialist? And one of the things was, the way the question was asked had to do with the way that it was labeled on MCAS versus how Bridges had represented it in their, their learning. So the kids know it, they didn't, they couldn't answer it the way it was asked because of how it was labeled.
Bridges is a national program.
It is.
And each state has a little bit difference.
Exactly, so they immediately got on the phone and said, hey, 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 what's up? And they said, well, you know what, make sure we go back and look and see what is the, where are the MCAS expectations versus what we're seeing in Bridges? The content is okay, it's just sometimes how it's delivered.
Sure.
And then, so we broke this down, as you can see, I'll put through all of them. Here's an example of a grade three question. Often, these are multiple parts, right? So they, these children have to have stamina, they have to be able to solve this. They do get scratchy, they can do all of that, but a lot of it's done right here, and then they have to type their answer in that box. So they have to get practice of doing that and being able to show their thinking. And that's something we're gonna do all, in all content areas across the district. And then here's a fourth grade question. And we can't get all the questions out the other thing, they only release so many because they wanna reuse the questions. So we, in, in math and ELA, elementary, we get a certain amount. And then here's a grade five.
But the teachers can replicate.
Oh, they can, they know what the standard, it's, that's, you know, you just can't get all questions. And there is site, and then the kids can practice in, and Mrs. Solanka's gonna show that later, put the link in there for you. So, and we use that at school. And then there's a whole MCAS digital library that has so many questions. So you can, you can learn from that. And then here's just some other things, obviously, those strategies I talked about. We're looking at the pacing, wanna make sure that we're getting to everything before the assessment happens. And that's, that's a theme all the way through grade ten, making sure that we get to coverage. Because the, the test isn't, doesn't happen the last day of school, it happens six weeks before school's over. There's still, there's still much learning to be done. So our number corner naturally does that, spirals and brings in information. We also are, as you know, are piloting I Ready for Personalized Learning as a supplement. We continue with our work with Green Boxes Digital. It's really that place where kids can practice their skills and reinforce their skills that they already have. We continue with our work with, um, Green Boxes Digital. It's really that place where kids can practice their skills and reinforce their skills that they already have. Um, and then, although they've been doing this, now we have these additional data points, um, really targeted intervention groups using real-time data from the unit assessments from bridges. Um, and then after each unit, um, they look at the data, they analyze it, and they create flexible, flexible groups. Sometimes those students could stay in multiple groups over time, um, or sometimes they just go in and out, they hit the one concept and then, and they're good to go. Um, and then a revision of scheduling to support more students and, and where at the weekend. At Oscon. And again, here is the grades, uh, sixth to eighth ELA. Um, and again, actually did okay. I mean, there were definitely some pockets where we need to look at, um, and I think that certainly, um, you know, providing evidence that compare and contrast. Those are areas where we need to be able to, um, have students cite their information. I think that that's, um, one of the areas that we really just need to focus on. And really supporting their answer, getting their evidence. Um, and then here's some of, again, you can see six, seven, and eight, write informative explanatory text to examine a topic. Those, those pieces, we really want to, um, make sure that they feel good about. Their writing was actually, um, pretty good across, you know, based on the state. We actually did a nice job, but, um, we want to continue to grow that. And as we, as I said, um, all content areas, we're going to really focus on writing. Having students write and get, show their thinking, so important. Um, because this is not just an ELA assessment, it's really cross-country, right? Um, so, uh, again, here's a question, here's that toggle again between a couple of articles, and you can see jumps up to five thousand characters. So, uh, they're expected to write more and with more detail.
And it's a, it's a much more sophisticated passage.
Absolutely.
Prompt, and they're asking them to synthesize and make inferences and, uh, a lot of pretty high-level, um,
Yeah.
Skills, that's, that's, that's good.
It is. And then here's, here is another one where it's just a multiple choice, but those other passages all have multiple choice questions. Um, and again, I won't repeat all of these, but you know, obviously literacy specialist, um, literacy classes are at the middle school with the reading specialist. Um, and we already talked about the reduction in the ELA course, courses so that we can really support that writing instruction. Um, everybody's, everybody's going to that P, that PD from the state next, uh, next Monday, um, using the writing rubric, uh, really looking at placement and, uh, making sure the kids are placed properly. Uh, and then just to change overall at the middle school to increase that time on learning, they, uh, removed morning break. And then they have multiple online platforms that they use to practice grammar vocabulary.
And it added a lot of time, uh, over, over.
Oh, my gosh. And it's, it's seventeen percent each day, that's a, that's a big number, and then, um, and they increased, you know, class meetings by twenty percent, that's huge. Um, and then we went into math, and, um, again, you can see the breakdown around the skills. And, um, this is grade six, and then some for grade seven there, um.
Again, these are the focus areas, just to keep reminding folks what we're seeing here.
Right.
These are the focus areas that the data shows us our focus areas.
Right.
So, you know, and this will be up on the website, so look at it, it's a lot to digest, and we, it's too much for us to go over every single one of them. But these are database focus points.
Just, just to, just to give an example, so the anchor standard here is statistics probability. The goal is developing outstanding, the grade six, identify box plot, and what your action plan is to make sure that our students can identify the box plot.
You've got it.
So.
Exactly, and what skills go into that.
Exactly.
When people at home are looking at these things, and these are areas where we didn't think enough of our grade six students identified the box plot. And so we're giving them the skills to make sure that they substantively do it, and they can operationally do it. Maybe there's a, like, as we saw with that one question, maybe the core, but the way the language is using.
It's also changing, um, approaches and, and also the state looking for some different things. Um, and that's all part of the process, so.
This is not, this, this is a difficult test, it's really looking at higher-order thinking, problem solving. So, I mean, so it's not, you know, check the box, right?
Also requires a huge amount of endurance.
Stamina is massive, stamina is huge, and I think that's something that we really need to work on with our students too. I mean, you know, it's multiple phases of assessment. Some students are quicker at it than others, um, it's a long, it's a long time, right? So I think those are important pieces. Um, and you know, really looking at how much we're getting done, statistics and probability, always at the end of them, you know. So really looking at, again, like I said, we, you know, it's done six weeks before school's actually out. Um, and then geometry, um, looking at what those needs were, and you can see that there's, you know, some areas that, um, this, they kind of line up to each other, right? So making sure that six gets what six needs and seven, eight, so that, um, it is organized in a way that makes sense. So, um, here is an example of math problem for sixth grade, seventh grade.
Real-life examples, so they're, they're good, they're actually good questions.
They're, they're great questions. Any great problem. So this slide is really particularly about sixth grade, right? We had some concerns about that sixth, that fifth grade from last year, right? So they were fifth graders when they took this, and some of the things that we were looking at, we have parents here that, that, you know, shared their concerns about it. So, um, these are the things that are happening at the middle school in order to address those needs in mathematics for these students. So they have adjusted the math specialist's schedule so that she can push in to period six for, the beginning of the year, she was really just pulling kids out. And we talked and said, like, how can we, like, what can we do? Because we, we have this, so how are we going to shore up these kids? And so, um, thanks, uh, Principal Mills and his staff, they were looking at all of the ways that they could support students. Um, then all teachers have a skill of the week, and, and that's really a basic math skill, will be reviewed in class and assessed at the end. Um, the brief assessment at the end of the week, uh, and then resources are going to be shared with parents. So that they know what's going on, um, there'll be a quick, quick, um, quiz on Fridays, and then there's a calendar of resources that are being created, and they're going to be distributed out to the staff. So there's this real concerted effort to, um, support the students where they are and build up their skills that we see they need some work on. Uh, and then Thursday is math utility day, math, 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 and more math on that day. Uh, and students will use X, um, IXL, which is a platform that allows them to target the areas that they need, and teachers can actually um, make that happen inside the program, and I think that's really helpful, um, to support, reinforce, uh, skills that need it. Uh, and then a reward given to a group, math class or utility class that achieved mastery on most skills over designated periods. So, um, they're going to figure out some sort of fun rewards for the kids. They do love getting those certificates.
I love this.
Everybody loves a sticker. So this is like really fun, so.
It's so systemic too, it's, it's really systems thinking with a group to, to solve a problem, really good work.
It is. And then just even so simple hallway visual, um, to mark their progress on the IXL. Not so bad, right? Get a little competition going. So I think that that's nice, and it, and it just shows that we, that it matters, it's important. So and not only, we're going to validate, you know, we're going to validate it for you, we're going to help you too, but we're going to, you know, we're going to make it exciting and, and really important.
One of the things that Dr. Scott, I talked about was bringing some of these examples back to the school committee, so you can see that these things are happening in action.
Yeah.
And you can get a sense for, uh, for what's happening. It's important. So you'll hear those in updates.
Right, because you want to get as much learning as possible, and um, here's some other things, uh, too, that have happened, and we already talked about the instruction all the time and how that was increased. Um, and then how the math teachers have incorporated enrichment activities, which pre-teach content, uh, to the students that, uh, will be learned more deeply later in the year. That's viral piece where I talked about six weeks of school, um, that still occurs after the test, so they want to make sure that they, just like what we're doing at the elementary with the number corner, they want to make sure, they kind of replicate the same thing. Not doing the number corner, the calendar like the kids do at the elementary, but really look at those skills and bringing them, um, up to the forefront, right? Even if something's so, you know, we're going to bring something on, um, ratios right now. Thanks, whatever you'd like. Um, IXL, again, I already talked about that, um, and then, so these are kind of repetitive.
Yeah.
And then here's off to the high school, and looking at their, um, specifics in grade ten related to ELA and math, and then science is actually physics in ninth grade. Yeah. Um, and then again, really looking at those key idea details, craft and structure, again, point of view, and then also really being able to um, compare, contrast those skills and going in and being able to write an argument, support your claim, you can see that pattern all the way through, what's your evidence? Um, and in the past for the assessment too, you can kind of get away with some writing, you just threw everything in. And they would say, oh, there's one, oh, they got that one, and they got that one. They're not doing that anymore. They're not giving you, they're not letting you slide if you put too much information in, they want to know you know what you're talking about. Because, you know, you just get lucky, you load, you load it up with all, everything, you're bound to get a couple, right? It's very different now. And I'm sure that's some of the things they're going to tell us on Monday. Um, and then, you know, being able to, um, really look at those complex ideas and also that organizational piece around their writing, um, and having that practice is really important. I think, you know, we've seen at the, at the middle school, that writing is pretty strong, so I would anticipate um, everything that they have done and are continuing to do and, um, will really support them, right? See it. Um, and then here's an example of their writing in their department. Also. And then here's some of the things that we're doing, the departments are all reviewing, and Dr. Solomon already mentioned this. Um, they are, everyone will be using that writing rubric to help support the writing. And really working with the department chairs, and they've been really great as we talk about all of this and, and their roles in helping support their departments. Um, and then really, we already talked about exploring those options for reading and writing support for our kids. Uh, maybe in looking at our current staff, how do we leverage that for support in the classroom? Know about the EPPs, percent, um, and then in year two, this is their second year of really, um, using that digital platform of IXL in both math and reading at the high school level, um, and it really, um, is being used, uh, regularly, and it has benchmark assessments, so I think that's really helpful when we're looking at data. And then utility for internet, it's really an intervention block, and even though I said reading coverage and writing here, it's also math. Uh, and then two co-taught classes in English to support those students, general head. And here's just an example of what the EPP looks like, and, uh, it will do just kind of general information. Plan meetings and communications. Kind of an understanding of what's going on. Here are the supports that might be in there. When they take the, um, when, if they get partially met in fifth grade, they don't have to take over. It's done, you know, they can if they want, we don't really have students that are opting to, um, it doesn't become part of their college, like, it's not part of the college or anything, so.
No, when they're getting into, to.
College, yeah, so I, I don't, and I'm not, it's, it's just something that you can't.
But, but we want to make sure that they understand.
Right.
What we feel they need to do based on.
Correct.
And that families know we have a plan.
Right.
To support.
Right, right, so it's, so it's, yeah, so, um, anyway, so that's, that's important information to have. Where they, kind of general information. And then they do not need, they do have to take it.
Yes, it's just partially.
Correct.
Yes, no, they do not need, they have to.
Yeah. Yep. A partial. And then here's, um, again, in math, um, some elementary things that we were looking at. And I'll go through all of these, they're all online, so you can look and see what we were looking at. Here's a couple of, these are all different questions. Couldn't say which one to show. So several, several of the, uh, math problems. Um, and again, we're going to explore the high school schedule. Um, we have a block schedule right now, but we're going to look at what that looks like. Students do a full year and a half a year, so we're going to look at those pieces. Um, English is the only course that's full year. Um, continue our department work with MCAS, uh, at, we're going to look at that integrated math course, it was here before. Um, we're going to look at that, see if it's a viable option, or is there some other thing that we could be doing to support the needs of students? One of the things they are doing for this year is, um, they're looking at the trigonometry class that the students take that second semester of their sophomore year. Um, they want to include more algebra too, so they're looking at these kids, they can't, where they, where the pandemic fell for their learning, algebra. Um, one and two, like, it definitely impacted them, so.
The math is so scaffolding.
It is.
It's hard to build on something.
Correct. So they're going to go through and they're going to really revise and make sure, looking at the data, uh, and then, and then the information they get from IXL too, which will be really interesting, to see where they need to circle back to make sure that they do have solid understanding of algebra one, two, and geometry. And then physics, um, it pretty well, it really did. One of, um, one of the things is that Russ Sears, one of our physics teachers, is on the physics, uh, committee with the department events, and he's always bringing us that information. And one of the things he brought back to us last year was the fact that the, the test was changing, and it wasn't going to be just check a box. We're going to have to show your thinking. So we spent time, um, together as the physics department, looking, and actually everybody, um, all the sciences to say, okay, how can we shift what we're doing to make sure kids have opportunities to practice showing their thinking, their writing, and all that kind of stuff? So, um, so that was really helpful, that was reflected in our sports.
Yeah, we top ten.
What were our scores? Do you have them up?
We were top ten in the state, I think we were eighth in the state.
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah. Um, but, but, but the shock about it too is that nothing's right into the physics, right? So that's, this is all kind of connected, um, together, right? So you have strong, a strong math background.
Just so I understand.
Yep.
The law of what you've talked about, it sounds like we've done this before. We've looked at what, how the tests have changed, we've, at least with physics, we, uh, were able to adjust learning through, you know, to match that. And we can see the results, so you would expect for these other things where we're now taking that same playbook to get similar results.
Yeah, and I think, you know, and we started this when, when I first got here, and, um, yeah, in two thousand nine, we started this conversation, we're like, okay, let's look at the data, we were moving in that positive direction, and then over it hit, and then we didn't have these.
Eventually, everyone's doing, like, this is, we're, we're all, every district's approaching.
All about this is a case.
But, you know, it's, it's a specific and really pressing need for us, so we're, we're certainly going at it with, uh, bigger.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's here, we need, we need to use it.
Yeah.
Um, and then sample, couple samples. This one, this, this was a very hot topic in the conversation with the science department, they were like, wait a minute, so, uh, anyway. There was really, I just, I think the conversations we have are so rich, so deep, um, with the staff around what they see. Um, and all of the training that we've been doing, things with Ray Porch and, and other people around looking at data and not, um, not making assumptions about the data, but really looking at the data and not making excuses about the data.
No becauses.
No becauses, because, because you come up with too many reasons to not look at it. So let's look at it and use it to, to our advantage. Um, and, uh, and so, and I just talked about Russ Sears who's in there, and then, um, continue to really look at ways that students can show, show that writing. So that is.
Great.
Just kind of, what is Mr. Excuse me?
So he's on the, um, he's on the, uh, Desi, the Department of Ex, Physics Science.
Yeah, I know, yes.
Yeah, and so he's like, yes, and he volunteers beyond, and was accepted.
That's fantastic.
It's unbelievable.
Can we get other people on the inside?
Yeah, well, Mr. Saka, you, you're on the inside with, uh, some of the Desi, right?
I'm sorry?
I'm in some of the committees.
Committee you're on, yeah?
Yes.
Maybe tell them.
Oh, well, what I'm doing is I'm in the committee back, um, it's, I'm a mentor for the new, um, special educator directors, and, uh, we're having, we've already had one of our virtual meetings together, um, we're having another one tomorrow. And it's all about the developmental, the development for the new educators who are the new, um, special ed directors in the district. And, um, it's very exciting to be able to do the work with them and things like that, but it's interesting, some of the questions that have been coming at me for our meeting tomorrow because some of them are questions around, you know, we've gotten our MCAS results, talk to me about, you know, what we're doing about that. Um, my, um, my basic rights workshop is coming up, can we talk about basic rights workshops and how we do that?
That's a good segue to.
This, to the next part.
Take your way if you.
So I will just click away.
So certainly we wanted to look at, certainly we wanted to look at MCAS and students with disabilities. Um, so it's very important for us to look at this data point. Um, what's important to understand is that every student who's on an individualized education program has specific goals that are based on their individual needs. However, in conjunction with that, we also look at this MCAS data for students with disabilities because we want to see how are they performing on that MCAS versus what are we looking at in terms of those individual needs? And, you know, is there a way that those two things come together? Do we need to look at that deeper, so on and so forth? We're also looking for trends over time per grade within that overarching students with disabilities MCAS data. At a first glance, right now, we are not seeing apparent trends. That's not to say as we continue to look at this deeper and over longitudinal period that we won't see those trends. This is just kind of like at a first glance. But what we are looking at closely is student growth over time, just as we are within general education. Because those trends and patterns that apply to general education students may also apply to students with disabilities. It's just that the students with disabilities may also have some individual needs that pop up that we see within the MCAS data as well that we want to look at. But this is why it's really important to have our teachers and our team chairs for special education students as part of these meetings and as part of these communications around analyzing this data and taking a look at how students across the entire district did. Because it really speaks to what we see and how we can provide service to all students.
And just as a reminder, when we're talking about student growth. The state looks at typical growth at between, I believe it's forty and fifty nine, I would say forty and sixty, as typical growth. So that's what you, that was what you would like to see. Anything over that is either, you know, higher, very high growth. We want to make sure that all our students are at least in typical growth. And that includes our special education students. You may see a student's achievement is partially meeting in that, in, in their assessment. Their growth is typical and or higher, that's really good. Now, if we have a student and whether they are a student with special needs or a student who without special disabilities, if their growth is low, we want to know why, right? So, and even if their score's not, still want to know why their growth is so good. But that's something that we want to look at because that, that gives us some information over time around growth and what's happening. You know, it's really good growth, what's happening and let's replicate that. If growth isn't so great, then we want to know. And, and just a quick, again, around what growth is, when you take the assessment, when you take MCAS, you are put in a cohort based on your score. The next year, they look at that, they look at you again, are you still in that cohort? Or is your grade above those typical in your, in that cohort, original cohort or below? And then.
And what's the percentage?
And what is that percentage? And then that's where, that's how they get their growth percentile. And then they may shift out of that cohort. So that's.
Just so you think you're dominating your own cohort, you.
So anyway, but just as a reminder.
That's good.
The percentage of students that are above the little cohort or there's a percentage that each individual student has exceeded or failed to meet that. All right, so what, what is the percentage?
Percentage is like, so if you're here, right, and then the cohort stays here, but your way up here.
Yes.
You as an individual student, that's your growth.
So that's the student growth percentage, not.
Yeah.
A group of students that are, okay, all right.
It's your, your individual growth relation to that.
Okay.
Yeah. That's the simplest way to.
But the cohort shift.
It's a fairly confusing concept.
It's very, it's very confusing. I have to be honest with you.
It is.
I stripped it down, but I, there's, there's way more to it.
Trying to encourage students to grow no matter where their ability lies at the time. And I say ability is just a, not a permanent thing, but as where they are right now. Like it gives them the opportunity.
Right, right, because again, if you have students with, students with disabilities and their achievement score is, is not the typical benchmarks for that grade, but their growth is, is either typical or above that, that's good because they're closing that gap, like they're getting closer and closer. Right? But if their, if their growth isn't, they're not getting it, they're not closing that gap. So.
Good, sorry.
There you go, sorry Barbara, didn't mean to.
No, that's a great.
So again, some of this is also designed for folks to be able to see on the website and, and get it without having massive contextual. So we did put some slides in and show that as well.
And this is one of them. Just about when you are in a team meeting for a student who is on an IEP, we talk about participation in MCAS, whether it's going to be the routine standard testing that takes place. If there are accommodations that they receive all across their day and their year, those accommodations will also be received on the MCAS and that's delineated in their IEP. And then for some students who, it's about one percent is the metric that Dessie likes us to use, who really cannot show their learning or achieve even, and they're really at entry points for that, they might take an alternative assessment to the MCAS. And students who are on alternative assessments to the MCAS typically then are on a different trajectory regarding graduation and all kinds of those things. But there is a decision-making tool for MCAS participation by students with disabilities that is gone over, then again, I'm not going to walk you through all of the, you know, very, very kind of.
But it's good, it's good for someone who's wondering about this.
Yes.
Who may have a structured student who's on an IEP can go, or five or four, can go and look at this.
Absolutely, because this does address five oh fours also, again, it's a very small print. But if you go online, you want to have this posted and you want to take a look at this. And this is something that, you know, certainly we go through in meetings when we need to, that is there. And then, you know, our analysis process that we, we look at individual student achievement scores. We look at, as Dr. Solomon was talking about, that student growth percentile. And we look at those individual test items and those are being collected for students on IEPs by the team chair in conjunction with the special education teachers. And they review that data in conjunction with the IEP goals. And we take a look at the modifications, that accommodations, everything that's in the IEP that is reflective of the student's need and look at that MCAS data as well as other corroborating data to see if it creates a total picture, if something is a little bit of an outlier. And then eventually, if there is something that we need to do, because if more or different interventions are required, then team meeting can occur to amend the IEP based on that MCAS data along with the other corroborating data and classroom performance that might be going on for that student. It is an important data point and we take it to both, to both inform us about how we need to work with that student as well as, you know, through the IEP as well as through kind of that like daily instruction.
I want to emphasize the first bullet again, that this is for all students. So every single student.
Who takes it.
Who takes it, who takes it.
Right. We're still looking at all students.
Really?
Yes, but.
This is an expert.
Exactly.
And then some of the things in the improvement plan for students with disabilities. The tracking and monitoring of student performance through that measurable goal writing and data collection. All our formal and informal data points and classroom performance. All of those things go into all of our work with students. That IEP goals are aligned with grade level expectations and content as well as with student need. And that is really what the MCAS is a reflection of, is that grade level expectation and content. That as I said, you know, our teachers are provided and are participating in professional development in ELA, math and science in terms of data analysis of student responses. That students do receive support in special education settings based on their individual item analysis. So if students are participating in learning centers or in some pullout models, that, that, that work is being done with them. That prior to testing, we always review accommodations that students are receiving and seeing. Are there new ones that we've added in that we need to make sure are present in their MCAS accommodations? Are there some that the student is no longer needing? That we've been able to kind of take away because they've been able to, you know, really kind of strategize around that themselves and make it a part of their own person as a student learner. We compare our MCAS results with other formal testing and with classroom performance as well as progress toward goals to see if there are any additional needs. And then some practice MCAS test taking, both within some of those special education settings, but also there's the clickable website. And not only, you know, in terms of individual items, but also in terms of question style, in terms of the use of the grading rubric, all of those things are important when we are practicing that MCAS with our students, which, and, and our practice is so important for all students, but sometimes particularly those with disabilities in our IEPs for us.
Just our references, we'll throw a live link so you can kind of go into anything you want.
Share, we can discuss, questions?
Thank you. I'll, first I'll see if there's any public comment.
There's none right now.
And I'll refer to the committee, Mr. Carr, any questions?
This is incredibly helpful. Trying to, if you have some thoughts, how do we get this, this level of detail? How do we get this out to the parents in the community and do we?
So post them, yeah, well, it'll post on the website, I'll put it probably under, I guess.
Certainly put it in the newsletter.
It'll be in the newsletter, but we'll get into, it'll be linked up to the website so people can get.
We'll put it on the front of the website.
Yeah.
So people can see it, they can't miss it as it goes to the website. But open for ideas.
Yeah.
Perhaps you might send an email from the superintendent telling everyone that the school committee just, you know, had asked to present on the action plans arising out of the MCAS scores. And if you'd like to see the presentation, just drawing their attention to it, I think that would accomplish two things. A, it would let people know that that's there. But also I think it would be another method of communicating your concern about the MCAS scores to the public. You know, and I think that that would, that would show them that, you know, you're rising to meet that challenge.
Good suggestion. I'll do that and I'll also put it in the text of my newsletter when I send that email.
Would you put this recording? Is that what you would put in the presentation?
So probably just a presentation, I'm thinking.
Yeah, it takes a while for that to turn around. Yeah, I'm not a presentation.
There's just one idea that I, I almost think it'd be all in all.
Yeah, I think that would actually be probably the most effective just because there's a lot going on in the newsletter. And, and I open it, but I'm not sure everyone does. So having a substantially separate email, I think, would be a more direct delivery at the bottom.
Easily done.
And then, I'm trying to remember exactly the name of it. It's a bit of the carrot before the rabbit. Is there not a state grant for students based on their MCAS, tenth grade MCAS stores to go to college?
The scholarship. Or, yeah.
Adams Scholarship, what is the details on? I meant, just.
Yeah, so.
You go to a state school.
State school. And it pays for the tuition.
Tuition, okay. And it's based on some level of.
There's, there's for, for the MCAS.
Okay.
Yes.
I know, I was going to say.
I don't know how you make that relevant to tenth grade student or parent.
I think they know about it.
We learned about it yesterday. Yep.
Yeah, they, they talk about. I was going to say, they, they do share, yeah.
Yeah, that's why I knew about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did a nice job of explaining.
Good, yeah. So. I know this is a little off topic, but I did want to bring that up.
Well, I just want to make.
Yeah. We can answer it.
I was just sort of thinking, that's maybe one thing where we can elevate the discussion as to the parent and the student that says, hey, there's a result out there by doing the best you can as an individual. You know, in the MCAS process. It's hard, you know, how do you motivate a student? Good.
Yeah.
I don't know, just something to think.
We used to, we used to reward students publicly.
Correct.
We haven't done that yet. But it's a suggestion, they, just so folks know, the, the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, and I'll just read it. It's a merit-based program that provides a credit toward tuition for up to eight semesters of undergraduate education at Massachusetts State College or University. For this scholarship, merit is based on student scores on the tenth grade Massachusetts comprehensive assessment system test. Purpose of the award is to reward and inspire student achievement, help attract more high-performing students to Massachusetts public higher education and to provide families and college-bound students with financial assistance. Now I'm thinking about it, it might be an award, several.
I think it is actually. Yes, it is, yes, it is.
Okay.
But it's an.
It's a few thousand dollars, I think, it's not insignificant, it's eighteen hundred dollars or?
I, I think it's. Award amounts says recipients of the John, there's a whole.
Yeah.
List of requirements.
Okay.
But the award amount says recipients of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship are eligible for an award of merit-based credit to a institution. Individual student awards at State University and Community Colleges shall be no more than the resident undergraduate tuition rate of participating institutions. So here's what it is, University of Massachusetts is one thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars. Stanhurst, one thousand seven hundred and fourteen. Boston, one thousand four hundred and seventeen at Dartmouth and one thousand four hundred and fifty-four.
It's not insignificant.
Yeah, that's significant.
Yeah. Okay.
Perhaps something we can make a little bit more of a deal about before MCAS.
Maybe right before, you're talking, you know, talking about the process, by the way.
Exactly.
If you, just so you know, there's something else passed today.
Hey, from Mr. Carr.
That's great, no?
Mr. Karen?
Ted, thanks for bringing that up. That was, that was awesome. You know, this is fantastic. I think this is just going for what people need. Aaron on the news all the time about like, what are schools doing to compensate for low MCAS scores? I honestly got to say, like, I think it's, it's kind of like where, I think the biggest piece of this is the elementary level. Because my kids really did really, really well on their MCAS and PSA teams. I mean, it's like off the charts and I, and I'm happy to say that. With that said, I do see that my, my kids are like in high school, so they weren't affected as like your children. Because I really think that, you know, at first grade, you, you learn to read and then you read to learn, right? And I really think those times when during COVID, they didn't really get to.
I just think it's. The early literacy and numeracy are just so valuable.
That's kind of what I'm seeing, I'm seeing the high school, like my kids really weren't affected.
And that's why we try to buttress that as much as possible, but we knew, with what we did through COVID, we knew that's a, it's, it's so fundamental.
Yeah, and I feel blessed to have my kids through the class at school system. And I can just do such a fine job at the early, at the early learning.
This is insurmountable, we can do this.
And I got to say, I'm just so glad that you focused on, especially three to five, because it's like, you feel like those are the two years that they were supposed to be learning to read and read some learn, right? These are the times that this particular group lost out.
But we do have to, and as you said, we, to your point, we do have to prepare our middle and high schools for the students who might be coming up, who still need more reading. And that's, that's.
Yeah, it's a multi-year, it's going to be multi-year, we don't know. You know, we're following our data, we're looking at trends and patterns. And so there are some big things that we'll see that we can manage, but there's also many things that pop up in the students. And this came up at the conference, I was just out of case, that social emotional hurt. We don't necessarily know where kids were at, so, you know, from that social emotional perspective when we were in COVID. You know, some kids were able to access because everything was okay in their house, other kids weren't. And for, for whatever reason, so there may be individual areas of students learning that we'll need to make sure to shore up along the way, so. But I'm confident the teachers are so dedicated and they want the students to do well.
Yeah.
They're in this.
In your conversations and department.
Department, absolutely. Understanding, we're a team, we're all together.
I have, have shown that. I'm very, I'm very enthused by what Dr. Solomon's talking.
Thank you, Mr. Karen. Sounds, no, no pressure, but you are like the educator on the.
Geez, also you straight from alphabetical order, it's really throwing me off. Thanks a lot. A few questions. With the webinar that's coming up, like MCAS, who, are teachers attending that?
Yeah, okay, so.
It's not mandatory.
Or anybody can. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, so I think, I think at the middle school, definitely a concerted effort by the teachers to do it. I know that Karen begins, is going to do it with the department chair for English. I know the principals at the elementary level and probably in the reading specialist, they call, and I've actually moved to meeting because I, I trust them to give me the information, I want to hear it right there from them. So, yes, I think it's two to four thirty this day.
Yeah, it's an afternoon time, it's like a horrible time of day, but.
Yeah, it's not great, yeah.
But then how is that? It is a horrible time of day.
It is, correct.
It's like, when I get off work and take my children literally everywhere they need to be.
Every day.
At the end of the day. I saw it, I was like, yeah. Can't, that's my entire life, right there, but. With that information, so like the people who can attend, attend.
Yeah.
And then how is, what is the plan in place to get that information then out to all of the people who it affects?
Right.
On, like our boots on the ground.
Yeah, so I'll work with the principals and the reading specialists and the English department to look at how we're going to submit that information. I'm not really sure, because I'm not exactly sure what they're going to give us yet.
Yeah.
So that'll decide how it's going to get out, but we'll package it so that it's doable. And then whatever they give us, then we'll look at whatever resources we need because I think that's what they're talking about. If it's in addition. If it's in addition to, like, looking at the MCAS rubric, some of those other things. So, and if they, and I think, I think I got a recording too, right? So that often happens. So Jesse will, they have their webinars, but then I'll get a recording of it. So that's another thing. So if that is true, and I'm not sure that I saw that in an email, but it's quite possible, that might be for some professional development.
For sure.
It all depends on what it looks like. You know, if it's something that we don't feel like they actually need to see it, we can distill it for them.
Right.
And give it out, and that's all.
Which feels like a necessary step anyway, like.
That's what happens no matter what.
Boil it down, here are bullet points, and of course, how we're, here are our action steps.
And this is what we're gonna look at, yeah. And say, okay, so now we're looking at our writing. Just for example, you know, the Deer Hill, they changed their assessment prompt. We're gonna look at what are, what are our writing expectations, and then we're gonna actually make a part of.
So that prompt is being put in place for the first time this year?
They always had a writing prompt, they just.
Right.
They just provide it, yeah, this one, just to, to get a kind of a baseline too on what happens with me.
Yeah.
Because we don't get all the data from the MCAS. We don't see all the students, and we don't get all their write, right? So this allows us to take their writing, use the rubric, and then have discussions, and then.
And then is there a plan in place to use like exemplars from this year to help in future instruction? Just there are student examples of that work?
We always use exemplars from the past.
Yeah.
So that was always used. And so I think now, whatever the differences are, we'll definitely use that.
Right.
Yeah, that's so powerful. It's so powerful. Powerful for kids, right, and teachers too, but for them to be able to see what the expectation is and actually see it. Is that it real? Break it apart. You can take those that aren't really exemplars and say, so what could be done better? And even their own school, here's your writing, here's the rubric, what could you do different? And we, you know, and go back to their writing. You know, I really want to push the fact that kids need to revise their writing, right? Authors don't just write and then ship it off.
Yeah.
And so we've been talking about some of those different.
Yeah, and writing for.
And then. And across content. Very.
And so then is the rubric, the writing rubric from the MCAS being used to grade that prompt? And then is it integrated into grading the other writing that they do during the year?
So that's what we're gonna look at, yeah. So they have that, and that's it. When I was talking to Deer Hill, that is their intention. So we're gonna make sure, based on what they tell us, on Monday, is there anything that we should do? Because when I called them, or they got back to me, you know, like, the rubric is right here. No, that's not what I was.
You knew it at all levels.
Oh, all levels, absolutely. Yeah, because I think that'll guide our practice.
And then also, is that being integrated into like social studies writing?
That's what we're gonna talk about, yeah, because.
It sure is. My other question, well, I have a few. Vuggle, um, also with IXL, is that, do we have licenses for all students?
We do, so IXL for, for sixth through, I do think it's six through twelve. I, I definitely think it depends on as they get older.
Yeah, I just didn't know our six kind of not.
Yeah, so with six, definitely six through ten. But we have cycle, so every student has that.
And are those full twenty-four hour a day licenses? You know how like some things got modified so they can be used after school? And are some students who maybe need extra practice? Like, I know in the lower grades, there's some, like, at-home math, like, like the iReady Math app, which may not be the right way.
Should I do it in tense focus?
Are you zooming in? I would have done my hair differently. With IXL, the, like, is that a tool that's being used, or is there some sort of like language that's being used with students and families to provide extra targeted math practice in the after-school hours?
Yeah, so hard is homework. So kids have a certain number they have to hit. So a lot of it is done outside of, of school hours. And so that's six through. And it is, there is an expectation from the teachers. Yeah, so they make a big deal about it. They use it for progress monitoring, the assessment, they keep going, target it. Or they use it for their teaching. So like, say, you know, when I noticed that this student's really struggling with these content areas, or these three students, they're gonna make a small group.
Yeah.
You know, so it is helpful, but they, yeah, I mean, you know, I, I'm sure there are some students who are reluctant, who are participating, but they've had really good response. And the kids love getting to pick it. They do, so, so it's kind of a funny incentive, but.
And then do the math teachers or, and you feel that the style of the questions in IXL aligns closely enough with like the MCAS-style questioning? Just because like, so language in MCAS is not, it's straightforward?
Yeah, I think so.
So is that, is that mirrored, like, and practice that in IXL?
That's one of the things we're gonna look at. That's a great question, because that is something that we need to be looking at. And it came up a little bit at curriculum review for math, kind of talking about what, you know, what are we asking kids to do? Does that look like an MCAS question? So, but that's been across, that's across all the levels. We need to, maybe we need to make sure that's true. So I'm not, I don't really have an answer for you on that one yet, but that's a great question.
Our school just shifted to ST math, which I'm not sure how high that goes grade level wise.
Yeah, I just meant the ST math case, and I'm like, give me a call.
The teachers felt like. The teachers felt like, as far as aligning to MCAS-style questions, it felt much more closely aligned.
Yeah.
And there's kind of that similar incentive program.
That was mentioned by.
They have a math.
Yes, yes.
Which is like cuter at the lower levels.
Yeah.
G, the thing that, but. But I just feel like if the language is similar, like the complexity of the sentences presented in the MCAS is really what throws kids off. They usually can handle the math concepts, but interpreting the question is a challenge. So just something to.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, that person. Yeah.
Um, the other question I have is for you, Barbara. With the review of accommodations prior to testing, is that done actively with families? And at what age are kids involved in the IEP meetings and that process?
That's a good question too. Yeah, so those reviews of accommodations certainly take place with families within the IEP meeting.
Right.
Always with an eye toward, you know, MCAS as well as what's going on in their day-to-day classroom experience. And students get involved in their IEP meetings and process at the age of fourteen, and they're, yeah. And then, you know, they are a direct participant and really ask, you know, what is helpful, what are you using, what isn't?
I'm wondering if there's any sort of like questionnaire or something that could be provided to, like, kids on IEPs and families to do some pre-thinking for that? Just to think about like, how well do I feel supported or able to attack the MCAS thing? Like. Yes, that is six days out of the school year.
Right.
But are they feeling kind of fluent in this text, test-taking style? Is there some pre-thinking they can do? I feel like it's really hard on the spot in a meeting, like, how did that go for you? And you're like, eh, fine. But some like more prompting questions to help families ask their kids or have a, you know, like a pre-conversation with them?
And certainly.
Just so that we can make sure like that everyone's getting enough support, you know, is it, you know.
Should we nominate this? Would you?
So I don't know that that should be necessarily MCAS-specific. Like, is there some pre-thinking we can have families and children do when we're talking, when we're talking about annual meetings?
Yes.
And it should be inclusive of MCAS? But I'm just wondering, like, you know, kids are really smart about their own education and experience. And it's scary on the spot with, you know, twelve professionals in the room, and then your, your boss and you, or whatever, with or without.
And honestly, those kinds of, you know, kind of on-the-spot situations don't really happen. Because if a student isn't the age to participate in a meeting, it can be really overwhelming. They get a lot of pre-work from their special education teacher or liaison, whoever that may be, in terms of preparation for that. You know, what is your vision? You know, what are some things that you worry about? What are some things that work for you? What do you really want to say? You know, is important to you is learned at this meeting? And prep that head of type. And they also really do some prep work with families prior to meeting. It's not something that's standardized as, are some of the things that I have put into place. But it would be a good area to look at standardizing in terms of, you know, preparation for the IEP meeting.
Yeah.
You know, here are a handful of questions to consider that you may want to give us some feedback about.
Right. I just think like, any chance that we can give families to pre-think and process and brainstorm before being in a meeting setting is really meaningful. And also, you know, just post-MCAS, okay? We've gone through MCAS season. Let's kind of unpack this with the kids who did have accommodations. How, you know, like, how did they feel, or how was testing? And I think that really aligns with our, our SEL goals too. Because we can teach kids how to take computer-based tests all day long, but then it's really stressful, or maybe they're not great testing, or like, just sitting in that room and saying, you have all day. You're like, sweet sassy melussy, that sounds horrible. That's awful. So like, what can we do right after to kind of, I guess, unpack and reflect with, in a productive way? And then maybe have that lead into the next year's plan?
Yes.
Just think, like, involve the kids in the process, because they're the ones who know the most about their own learning time.
They absolutely.
Right? I have some others to mention, that's all. That might, I think, I think that's. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Carrion.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman, Helen. I had the benefit of going through some detail with Doctors Sullivan and Stone earlier, so from that, I know what an historic amount of work it was. So thank you to the three of you very much for, for doing that and demonstrating the sincere concern about the MCAS scores and taking the time to articulate the action plan. There's, I guarantee you, we will see improvement because of your attention to it next year. So thank you for doing that. I, I don't think, I don't have any clever questions like Miss Seon.
Should mention the principals.
Yeah, the principals.
The principals did a lot.
And the, the principals also did a lot.
This is their, these are their buildings, right? So I went to them and said, okay, this is what we're seeing, what you think, what are the things that you're doing? So a lot of this we already have.
And I do know, I do know that Principal Scott is actually watching the game so that, and so that he can understand what concerns are.
Yeah.
And I mean, this happened, we don't have hours.
He cares just to stay out.
So, and I do know them too. I didn't mean to exclude anyone, but I, I knew that.
No, no, no.
That was a robust presentation. Took a lot of time to prepare.
It was, it was very fruitful putting, putting this all together and.
Well, it also helped to identify some, some resources that we made.
It did, it did, yeah.
So that's, that's.
So thank you to the, to the, to the parents who brought that forward. It was a good exercise for us.
Thank you. I started on. From my perspective, obviously, thank you. This is amazing. You know, we were presented with an issue, you guys looked at the data, you figured out steps, action plans, identified needs. It's, it's not, it's a test fall. It's, what can we do about that? This is, this is problem-solving at its finest, and I'm very impressed with what you put together. And I'm also just grateful for your own wavering belief in our students and our staff. And, you know, I, I think, as we talked before, you know, we, we have high standards for our students. The town has high standards, the people here have standards for the students, and to know that you share that for all of our students from, 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 you know, whether they're on the IEP or, or, you know, I'm trying to get the terminology, but we have, we want everyone to do really well in this. This shows not only do you want them to do well, but you have a plan to do it, and you're gonna implement the plan, and it's out there for, for people to look at. Tremendous. Really appreciate what you've done here. So thank you so much. Now, anything else to do? Any other questions, comments, any public comment on this before?
No, there's none. Check again, no.
Great. So with that, we'll move on. I think this one, it'll be turned to you for a special education update.
Yes. So for my special education update this month, what I really wanted to do was walk you through, which I will do through sharing my screen, my revamped webpage, because it provides just a plethora of information. Now, certainly I can go through that with you right now rather quickly, if you would prefer that I.
And the, the main focus was clearly the MCAS information.
If you would prefer that I would wait till my next meeting with you, in the interest of time, I'm absolutely willing to do that.
That's, that's, that's certainly fine with me. I just want to make sure if there's anything you wanted to present to the committee, you have, you have, or on the agenda, so.
That, that was going to be my focus for it, and I certainly can, can hold off until next time.
There is, there is a, the website though, that, because I think one of the things that I, you know, looking at this as a, as a parent, I want to make sure I can help my, my own children as much as I possibly can in mastering these concepts too. Because it's, it's a home concern as well. And of course, we're gonna be feeding.
Right.
To help you, but are there resources that they might be able to tap into on your webpage?
Particularly on my website that are connected to MCAS.
Yes.
Not until we put this up.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
There are a host of other things that they can tap into that will be helpful, but that might be for another day.
Anything from you, Darkseid, on that?
No, I do know that there's resources that were put in, Lisa Redden had worked on. I just, I haven't pulled it up, so.
So that's something we can provide as we move forward too, because as we get closer to MCAS, you know, might be some good things to go over.
Right, yeah. And there are resources on there for families.
Yeah.
For a variety of things, for a variety of things.
My particular portion of this, my pages of this, I'm going to put onto my website with that link.
Good, okay. Okay, well, we did have one asked. Barbara, do you want to present that now?
Oh, yeah, that's interesting.
For a spread teacher?
Yes.
Okay.
I think this would be okay to bring it up now.
I'm gonna stop my share.
It's, okay. It's either, it's either now or during the time for reports out from subcommittee.
From some.
Right, because we had, we had this in subcommittee. However, she is here now, we can table it or that, but if we can bring it up now, we can just kind of check it off. Because it's kind of really.
It doesn't really require a vote.
It's just informational from her.
So, Mr. Carrion, I, I suppose what I'll say is, if you remember the subcommittee, if you think your presentation, we can put this along here and in favor, you know, make sure she can clear that.
Yeah.
Sure. So in the finance subcommittee, we, this week, what I talked about was what we're really seeing, and actually, I might ask to share my screen again.
You can. You still have the power.
Thank you. I actually have this. We, through your generosity, last year hired a additional teacher to do some co-teaching at the eighth grade, because we had a bubble class of students there. And that teacher moved appropriately so with that bubble class of students into the high school for this year. And we really tailored what that looks like in terms of the disability area of students and the work that is being provided to really help their learning. With, and we can see it with our sixth graders, both in the MCAS and with the jump of identified students with disabilities at that grade level. What has happened is with the amount of initial evaluations that we had last year at the elementary level, particularly in grade five, there is a vast number of students now in grade six who are on IEPs. So if we compare students in grade eight who are on IEPs and students who are in grade six on IEPs, it doubles from grade eight down to grade six. So our grade six special education teacher has something like twenty-six students who are on IEPs on her caseload, as opposed to the grade eight special education teacher who has about thirteen. That happened at the very end, honestly, of last year. And when we are looking at that, what we were looking at was really trying to, you know, put a lot of extra supports in place to help that. But now compounding and looking at the MCAS scores, what my ask really is, is that we, at this time, instead of waiting a year from now, hire a, an additional special education teacher for the middle school to do a combination of things. Address that large number of students on IEPs who are in grade six, and really be able to divide up that so that there can be more targeted instruction for those students, particularly for those whom we are worried about, their MCAS scores, as well as their disability areas, so that they can be appropriately addressed in smaller groups. And that we are not kind of pulling from our other grade-level special education teachers and program teachers to help out this grade six cohort. And I would really see that as a sustained position, because then what it will do is it will continue to help this bubble as it goes through the middle school, but also stay there so we can expand our programming for students who might need some more focused programming. If eventually someday, maybe that focus might be on, you know, not students with a specific learning disability, but maybe down the road. Students who, who have a different identified. but maybe down the road, students who have a different identifying disability area, and it would more focus a teacher in that area to provide supports specific to those kinds of students. Um, a couple of hires that I have made this year to replace, um, student teachers who have moved on to other things, um, have come in at a significant financial savings to us. So that we, and in fact, do have, you know, some extra room there in terms of our finances to be able to help support hiring a teacher at this time for the middle school to address this need of ours.
It'd be something we wouldn't put into the next budget because we'd be able to do it this way.
Right.
It also will not require a hire of, um, an additional paraprofessional or ESP for that. We, we have enough of that kind of support to go around to the middle school to really help.
It's really in concert with helping that group that needs, needs some support.
So that, that was what I was.
So I guess if, if you want to, like, it's not on the agenda for a vote, but it was supported by Finance Episodes Committee.
I don't think it needs to vote, that's it. I think it's more of an informational, financially, she's got the savings in the American Department. Um, it was kind of an informational, this is what we'd like to do. Um, we have the funding to do it, and we talked to my subcommittee, um, and we'd rather do it now than wait till.
Yeah, but if, if, if this is not a vote, then, then it'd be, I trust your judgment on energy resources. Um, and doing our, these prefer cases, but I do want to make sure the committee has.
Yes.
Input. So, Mr. Carr, any questions?
Created.
Mr. K, Mr. K.
Yeah.
Say how much.
Um. It's a good idea. I'm also curious if this should kick off kind of a special ed audit and, and allow us to, push us, take a look at special ed staffing pre-K through 12. Um, I'm really curious with our process of testing, and I feel like, um, many families are becoming more informed and more empowered to advocate for their children. And at times that, that means families are requesting testing. Our FTSS process is becoming more robust. So perhaps that indicates more testing. When the testing happens, um, I am curious, and maybe you've said this before, and I just, you know, feel like my experience in different schools has been different, and I'm, I'm not in this school during the day.
Right.
So when testing happens, um, let's say I request testing for my child, and so it has to happen. Does the special ed teacher use their time to do that? Is there a school psychologist who's doing that? Who is doing the testing?
In our particular district, it is the school psychologist.
Always, every single test.
Except for the therapists. So a speech and language pathologist will do her own test, the occupational therapist will do their own test, the physical therapist will do their own test, the school psychologist will do both the cognitive and the achievement testing.
Okay. Um, that's a different model than a lot of places use. So.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, we, we.
When I first came on board. So that makes me feel like at least special ed teachers aren't being taken away from their services and not the time on learning of the students during the day. I am concerned though to hear, so for example, like a grade eight special ed teacher singular, right? One teacher has a caseload of 13 kids, which feels like a lot to me. Well, you're shaking your head, but like, as a human doing work, that's a lot of kids. I just like, so, on a regular day, when they, I know every child has an individual plan and has different pull-out and push-in services. But what would be the highest ratio of kids in a pull-out setting for, for like, grade eight or another special ed pull-out situation?
Right. So what we are looking at in our district is right now the highest pull-out that we have. We have, we have one class where a group of eight is pulled out. Um, and we have an ESP in that classroom with that teacher to provide supports for that. Happens to be one of our program teachers. Um, so that, you know, that would be the highest one that we currently have right now in our district. By DESI standards, you're going to have up and up to eight students on your own as a teacher, between eight and 12 with the support of an extra paraprofessional slash what we call here ESPs. And then once you have over 12, you need, um, an additional ESP or.
Yeah, because it's an entire classroom.
Then, looking like a, yeah.
Yeah, that wilds me, because as an interventionist, I don't take more than four at a time, because after four, that's not a small group anymore.
So when I'm saying 13, I don't mean that they're all out at one time with a special educator.
But you said you can have up to eight. That's not very small.
And that is only actually, you know, like I said, at this moment in time, there is one period that one of our teachers is eight.
That just feels like a lot to me.
To your point though, I think we do need to look at.
And some of, some of that has been looked at at our audits, our social emotional one and our reading one that we did over the, um, last year's. Um, when they looked overall at, um, you know, the classrooms, the programming, the IEPs, and they visited, you know, that was kind of a, an ancillary thing that they looked at along with it and did comment on in those reports, um, that, you know, some of those areas.
Yeah. I guess what I like, I'd be more comfortable with is, okay, that's a state level audit, and they're, they're, they have their standards. And then I feel like we could do a district level, go have like, what's going to be best for our.
Well, yes. And I think you'll see as we're looking at positions in the coming meetings, we'll be talking about a therapeutic program and, and other positions to, to build our capacity to help all students that come our way who have a special education, individualized.
Yeah. I just think any special ed staff that we can add, and I understand that that's budget, that's a salary, that's a big deal. But every single person in the building is benefiting from lower ratios, more people who are strange in special ed.
We want the most trained people.
Right.
And to build that flexibility, we need in a small district.
Exactly.
To be able to help students to do activity in a particular program that requires staff.
Right.
So you're right, you're right in line with the way I would think.
Yeah, I'd just like to see that, you know, at a district level, and I appreciate the, you know, all of the state level audits that are done, but.
And we did do a state level audit, but we also did independent ones with consultants.
Yeah.
Two of them.
That's right.
Part of what they looked at, so we're going to continue, you know, um, to do that work and to look at those things independent of the state and things like that. Because you're right, we want kind of the best programming and that we can possibly have for our students.
Yeah.
It's a good point.
Um, Mr. Scott? I, I actually believe that, uh, many of the special education student services related issues that we confront or challenges we confront are resources related. So I actually, I'm, I'm, I'd love to hear you say that you'd like to, I, I'd actually like to see at least two more special education teachers hired at the elementary level. Um, because I, I, because exactly what the same, she's articulating, I, I think, I think we would start to see some of that pressure that we're getting from these special education parents relieved a bit. I, I just, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's a resources issue. I, you know, it's a rather lay opinion. But from my attention that I've just been paying attention to this topic lately, I have come to the conclusion that that's what the issue is. It's just that it's a, I think we're short in resources, which in special education, it's not the only department that I think we're short in resources in, but, but that is a major one that I think. So I love the idea. I hadn't thought of it that way. Love the idea of doing an audit, district audit, looking at how, what, what resources we might need, because that's what we're doing right now with food services.
Right.
What can we, what can we, what do we need in order to, to overhaul this a little bit?
Well, we, I think we have the information. It's just a matter of looking at it through the eyes of what do we need to keep that flexibility, to make the groups as small as possible, to have that, um, those interventions be intensive and appropriate. Uh, so yeah, no, I, I, this is definitely something.
Maybe future diet.
Yeah. Oh, I, I love this.
I guess one question for you, Mr. Scott. Again, I recognize it's not a cruel request, but as far as, um, we just heard, um, you all, that we are, that we're going to be requesting additional hires for, for different things.
Yeah.
And, you know, we just heard that in the session there about maybe looking at, I guess, is there an advantage in seeing how some of this, we, it seems like we have room in the budget to hire someone for this purpose. That's a need. Uh, we have other needs as well.
Yeah.
Um, is it, is it, is it worth taking a step back and seeing strategically where could we need to apply this resource, or we know that this is the immediate burning need we have to plug this gap versus some of the other things?
The, the, your point is correct, but this is, this is.
This is, right, so this, if this happens, right, so we'll have an additional special education teacher this year in the sixth grade, which we have concerns about. And then next year, if we get the additional, um, math teacher, right, like for sixth, right? So we've already reduced the, in the ELA sections, we've gotten it down. If we get a special education teacher, that helps alleviate some of the, those, you know, larger groupings and allows us to target. And then if we add in the additional math teacher to then make those sections even smaller in math, like, it's, it's a win.
Because the height. Because in the grade, are there about 100 kids in the grade?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's a quarter of the grades is on an IEP.
It is, it is a burden.
Yeah, just, just to build some.
Yeah, it's, it's an area of absolute.
And so, and what, what I was just trying to spare it out, it sounds like, that this, this, this hire would fit in strategically with all the other things.
Yes.
Yes.
And we'll follow, and we'll stay with this grade, right? So next year we'll get better.
That's great. Thank you for, uh, thank you, Subcommittee, thank you, Sean, for, uh, for putting that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so it'll be a subcommittee update. Um, we'll switch, we'll look at the budget, resources, governance. Uh, I think now we go to a capital update from this whole.
Yeah. Um, we're going to kind of do this together if it's okay.
Give you the power if you want to show.
I have power.
Can you, can you put up what I just emailed you?
Oh. Yes. Is it PMC pricing?
Yeah.
There we go.
All right, cool. Um, so this is, this is what we got from the company, uh, that we spent $250,000, right?
This is what the, this is the security cut, so, all right, so just to, this is the, yes.
Correct.
This is the, um, this is the security report that was commissioned by AI3, which is the architectural firm.
Right.
Who was hired by the, um, School Facilities Committee.
Right.
Hired that they had, it was called Barzano and Associates. And these are pricings that AI3 put together that were along, that were.
That we need.
That, that the, that were pointed out as security issues.
Right. Not only security issues.
Some of these I don't know that we want to put up.
So, yeah, uh, well, some of them, uh, we could eliminate this securities, not, that, that's not the security, that, that, that's a different element.
Oh, this is different element?
Yeah, that's not secure.
I'm sorry, I didn't look at that.
Here is not on there. Not on it.
Okay, so this is all, all right.
This is all with the school, this is what Cohasset Middle School needs, and that's $12 million.
Yes. All right. Sorry, Paul, I shouldn't have.
No.
I didn't see it beforehand, should have spoke about it. I thought it was a security.
No, I wouldn't have put that up.
Okay.
You sent that to me in a different, I would never, I, I, we're.
I apologize for that. It looked like it, but it's not it.
So this, this is where we are right now, okay? And I'll go to the chair for this, because we're at a subcommittee level, we can't even get a walkthrough, okay? We've been trying to get the town to do what we do every year, is a walkthrough to the schools. We're not even doing that to the middle high school, okay? So, so we were, we were told that we're going to build a new high school, and that they're not even going to tour the middle high school. So, that said, this is what that middle high school needs. And to see this one through 17 of 1,737,000, 737,000, that's not even, that's not addressing what's wrong with the middle high school. And here we have situations that if you want to go through them, this is the list that we should be going through.
Yeah.
This is, this is, this other stuff is just, this is like, this is it. This is what we spent money for as professionals to tell us what our schools need, not to go back and say to the principals that aren't, excuse me, that they're great people, but they're not building inspectors. They don't know what this school needs. So we, we need $12 million in the middle high school. So these are, these are the things that we should be crossing out and seeing what we need in this particular school. And then it goes on to the Ausgood School, and that's another five or seven million dollars. I mean, we're talking millions of dollars that need to be spent now, and we're looking at one through 14, like, this is, this is what we need. I mean, why are we presenting what we need to the town? I, I, I just think it's kind of like, I've been doing this for four years. I've been on the finance committee, and I've just seen us grind ourselves, which makes no sense. When, when we all took the time, spent $250,000 to find out what our schools need. This is what we should present to the taxpayers and say, this is what we need.
Mr. K, I, you know, I wholeheartedly agree.
Right.
That, that our, our schools, we, we can look around, this is one of the better rooms, so we can look around and find things that used to be done.
Best.
It's fine.
Um, so, you know, and it, it doesn't take long to walk through the middle high schools to find areas where you just, we, we can do better. Uh, and same with Ausgood, same with Tewa. Um, our town budget overall, I think somewhere around, Ted, you might know this better than I, somewhere around $36 million.
$36 million.
Um, so the, the, every year, the whole, the whole budget of the town, so the schools take about 23, 25 million dollars to that budget. So the process that we're going through now is the process where the town has additional capital of that remaining 10 million that they can allocate us to do some things. So that's the question that's asked. Question, your answer is a better question, which is, what do we need from the town? What, what should we propose to the town? How do we get our schools where they need to do it? And if we need 12, 15, 20 million dollars, how do we fund it? But it's a different question in a different audience. And so I think we need to, and, and Mr. Carr, you'll know better than I do about how to get that question to the right people so it gets on the right warrant. Um, but that, that I think is, is worth pursuing because, you know, spending, let's use, let's take middle high school out for a moment, just on the, on the, on the new building question. Let's take Ausgood. Spending $5 million on Ausgood now probably saves us.
Absolutely.
$25 million in five years.
Right.
And I think there's a lot of evidence of this town doing the verb being thing, which puts us in a little bit of a hole. So I want us to have that conversation, but I think the instant question, if we're talking about items one through 17, is what do we go for for the town in the limited ability they have to give us capital expenditure?
Well, okay, I.
Can I take this to tell me?
Yeah, I, 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 I think we should, I, if we could, that in the next, because this is supposed to be only December 1st, um, if we could do a, a subcommittee of the whole, then I think we'd have some time to look at this and see, because there's things on here that, you know.
Let's just sit this. I, I would be happy saying.
Yeah.
The town.
Then let's do it, let's do it.
But.
I, I think it's going to work.
But I don't want us to not take the opportunity to, on the smaller things, the one and a half million dollars of capital that we need to ask for. And I think so for approval, that tonight, uh, I don't want us to miss that opportunity. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but there's a lot of things in here that don't make sense. You know, like when I, when we put this thing together for 14 items, I mean, we're talking, you know, like the mini, mini bus athletics, $100,000. We talked about leasing, which would be a better call, right? Like, those are conversations that we all need to have, right? Because if Steve Rattuck says we need $100,000 for it, well, why wouldn't we put that in the school bus lease? Because we don't want to buy them any, because we might buy electric, everything electric. Where's Olivia? Um, you know, so it's, it's, uh, it, it's kind of like this, this is like, this is just so important stuff that I, I think that, uh, it, it goes without saying that we need to, uh, either grind ourselves or just take this and say, this is what we need. Let them come back and say, you know, uh, so either that or, I mean, these, there, there's, there's so many different things not on this that we gotta even talk about security that's not on here, right? So you want, we, we, we talk about the, we share, right?
I apologize.
It scares me that my kids are in the school sometimes, to be honest.
I had, had looked at, had looked at that.
Yeah, so my point is, is like, how do we address, because none of those things that we talked, that you had sent me about security are even on here. Are even on here. So like, I, I, I just think it would be incompetent of us to send this over right now the way it is. I think we should send over. I think we should send over that, and, and check off, maybe we can take that list and prioritize what we think that list should be, not this list. Because that's the list, that's the professional list, that professionals know what they're doing. Here, it's, it's really, so, isn't.
I, I, I agree with you, I, I agree with you, I just, what we have, the, the smallest, I think, is a list developed by the administration, based on immediate needs of the, of the principals. And, that is something that can be delivered on through the normal process. I support a hundred percent, and we can make it a priority of this committee to do this larger exercise. But I think right now, the town needs us to ask them and let them know an indication of how much money we can ask, what, and what we needed for, that they can pay. So, I, I do think there's an expectancy in approving a smaller list now, one that's been, through the administration, and reviewed by Ms. Owen, and, and represents, you know, clear need, present needs of the, of the schools. With the knowledge that we're gonna come back with a larger bite of the apple for this list.
When are we gonna do that?
That's, that's a question, maybe we put it on our next agenda, maybe we do it, you know, have a specific subcommittee, we can talk about timing for that.
Yeah.
Uh, and I will commit to you that this should be a priority, this is a discussion we should have in the near term. Uh, but I don't know that using this to displace what the town's looking for this committee to submit, as far as the immediate needs, would be a good tactical, um, play, step.
So, look, Ted, you know, can I also, I just, some of these items have already gone to public, so they're part of the town meeting, which is on Monday. So they're looking for us to take a vote on the things that people anticipate voting on in the town meeting.
Right.
This is a very important document, and they, if we sent this out without any explanation or review, it would not go well for us. So I think we need to really dig into this, and these are incredibly important things, but I, I think it's imperative, probably as soon as we're able. To just, these are the results of a highly competent study, and we should distribute this widely. I mean, as part of it, say, you know, we're gonna dig in and see what this is, but we wanna show what the results of the study was.
These are also prioritized.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that, see, what I'm trying to say is, is that, this is the professional way to do it, and this is the.
So, well, I guess, I don't know if you can put the, the other one on the screen, it was previewed last week, so we know what the items are, and I think. To, uh, prioritize that, so.
It would be good, let's talk about this on, whenever we can fit it on the next agenda, whatever, I think this is, should I start with a discussion of the whole committee?
Yes.
For people to see this.
Yeah. Yeah, you know what, I, I also think that, you know, if we can prioritize what, 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 like, as you said, this is already done for us. And then, then you can really get a, a guesstimate of like, what can we, cause what's great about this plan, um, the other plan, so. Is it just gives the timeline of when it's ne- necessary, right? So, well, you know, I was, uh, we were talking earlier, Craig and I, about the, the future, what we're doing as far as the new schools. I think people need to know, like, that this is what we have, this is what we're gonna need, these are prioritized, what's gonna be spent. And then, then you can get a whole buy-in, right? Cause why, and, and, and believe me, I'm a hundred percent for the new school, I want this to have a new school, okay? And, but it's gonna have something for everything, right? So what is, what, what is in, what's in it for everybody like Ted and I, with our kids in the school? And I'm not saying that we want anything, I'm just saying that if you're gonna get everybody involved, there's gotta be a piece for everybody to get looked at, you know what I'm saying? Because I think if you just go from the elementary parents and say, hey, we need a new middle school, there's not gonna be enough support in the town, because it needs to be like, addressed of, this is our ten-year plan, right? We need to fix these things right away for the first five, and it might be five million dollars, it might be five million for the next five million. And that's with human capital as well, capital and facilities together. So it's, if it's a five million dollar ask for five years, that's twenty-five millions, just to get our schools to up to date to where they are. And then in six years, we can get a hundred and fifty to two hundred million dollars to build the new school, I mean.
One of our contributors has to, has to par for town care issues, so, I know, this, this, this is a big important issue, and it's, you know, it's a lot of, a lot of money. But I do wanna make sure everyone's, you know, can see the results of what had been, the stratification of the priorities that, since last time, we've seen it, so. And so, anybody just, it's on the screen, if we can just kind of tell us what's changed and, and the rationale behind it.
So we gathered everyone's input on how they want to prioritize, there's a few things that have come off. A couple of naked facilities, we did not need the fire alarm replaced in this building, um, he said it's on, you know, in the next five years, it needs to be done. Um, the ballistic film for Ausco, we've already got a quote for that, and that's gonna happen over February break, because that was under five thousand dollars. And then the electric bus came off because that, um, went to, on special, was going through the special town meeting, um, and we have full support of that. So those, those three things have come off, and then we prioritize the rest, we have the bus lease, eight diesel, um, eight diesel buses, the Aus, the Ausco Vestview, the bus parking lot. Um, and the replacement of the aging phone books, um, after meeting with Lisa Raden, um, there's a phased-in project to. Replace the smart, and upgrade smart projectors, starting at the high school, the middle school, sorry. Um, and then second to that was the iPads, Deer Hill, Ausco, it's about two hundred fifty-five iPads. Continue to re-tile the classrooms at Deer Hill, so all spaces were finally, um, rid of carpets, and have new tile. Continue to replace the furniture, um, capital, last year asked us to phase that in, so she's doing it by grade level, and she's also adding, um, in Deer Hill, a grade three classroom, so we do need furniture there. Some of these are DPW, which have been on the list for a while, the asphalt road from Quonk Street needs to be resurfaced, we know that. Um, Evan, director of retarded, is looking for the school board, he is trying to, um, put together some fundraising to help offset that price. And then back to the asphalt road sidewalk between Deer Hill and Ausco needs to be resurfaced. And extend the sidewalk here on Quonk Street, um, this doesn't go all the way down to Quonk Street. And then Evan Director is also asking for a mini bus, since we have a certain problem getting our, um, teams transported and generated for Ausco into two hundred. So it's one point seven, um, to go back to what Paul's saying, these things are more operational and educational needs. That bigger list, I think, is more of a structural need, um, much bigger.
And it's in these.
Definitely, definitely need, but I think we should take that as a whole, um, and move forward with that, but separate from this operational piece.
So number two, the best you will do is also an individual item at town meeting, too.
Yes. How many of these are on the warrant now?
They left us, on this list?
Yes.
They left a school bus, which I took off, um, the vest you, I believe is.
We took it off of our list, cause it's already on the.
It's on the warrant.
It's here, but one of it is for the feasibility study, ten architect, look at what, design what we need, that's what's on special town meeting now, is to do a study. Figure what's the best way to create that new vest.
I don't think that's right.
No?
No, I think it's money for the lease.
I'm confused about it.
Is it Monday?
We were just previewing it over dinner, we're very.
It's very clear, so, there's a warrant, it's very clear on what's in the warrant, it has a description, it's been mailed and received by everybody in town. Then there's activity at the town meeting, and they vote on the warrant, so there's certain items that are already in the warrant, that people have already seen and will vote on Monday night.
Yeah.
One of which is, I think, the electric school bus, and one is the leases, you know, several of these are already there.
The bus lease is on.
It's on the warrant, yes.
I can check with, I can check with Michelle, um, but according to her conversation I had with her, it's the, the money to do a feasibility study on, at Ausco, and it's the electric bus. Those are the two things I'm still on special town meeting.
So, I guess, let's, procedurally, um, we, we're still identifying the means, if we approve this as a request, and it's on the warrant, is that?
It just takes, it just.
Take it up, we'll take it up, we'll take it up.
Um, she, this list was due to the town, um, on the first, but I talked to Michelle, I told her we were meeting yesterday and today to talk about it, so she told me, you know, as soon as we get it to it.
Okay, so this is for the spring town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Spring, not special.
Special.
Um, so I apologize, I do, I do have this now, so, I'm in favor of that, okay, I'm not gonna be here, so.
Thank you.
Sorry, guys. Thanks, Chris. So, on, on this particular one, I do, as Ms. Owen mentioned, you have, we do have something that counts, so I do wanna open this for discussion, to see if anyone has any concerns or thoughts on the priorities, uh, and prioritization. And with the knowledge that this will be, well, we will be seeking a motion to approve this whole submission for town as our cap needs. Mr. Carr, questions, concerns, observations?
I, I shared my.
Yeah.
Methodology, or what I thought about budgeting, um, I don't disagree with a single thing on this list. In terms of order, it just, the reality is, we're not gonna get it, so the things at the top of our list need to be, are most important dots.
Yeah.
So no, I don't agree with, I don't disagree with any of it, I, look, I think we should have a holistic, I mentioned in my note, we should have a holistic approach to the town about paving. You know, we should just, us paving on our own, and the rest of the town paving on their own, this doesn't make any sense. So we should have a real conversation before we get too far down the road on, they're gonna look at that number? Like, there's certain things, like the sidewalk, you know, there's patching and stuff that has to, that's an immediate need, right? If we get paving and patching done here, it makes sense to get all of it done here, like, we should be together as the town on how we look at the, so. No, this is, look, this is, we're entering the budget process for the spring, we have capital things that we need, these are real things that we need, it's not inclusive of everything we need, but it's a good place to start. And, so I don't disagree with it, I think, I absolutely agree with the bus leases, I think that's, you know, that's gotta be on the top of the list.
It's a school.
Yeah.
And even that, that's it, even though, even though we prioritize, cause last year they asked us to prioritize as well.
Yeah.
It still didn't come to us, and the one that we prioritize.
Yes, and it will never, you've got a wisdom of somebody else.
Last year we went, and then they.
Yeah.
Pushed back and said prioritize, you know, yeah.
Yeah.
Which may happen, but at least we can be to it.
And Paul mentioned earlier, we were not able to have a review with the relevant people in town, because we had heard that they wouldn't come to look at, they couldn't come and look at the high middle high school. And we had a lot of people on standby, a lot of work had been done, we'd met very quickly, and the consensus of the subcommittee was to reschedule that meeting, and I sent them to know that they had talked to everybody about it. So, we definitely did that, because the right people that, that needed to look at this stuff, were not able to, were willing to come. So we just, we had a reason, so that's the genesis of what happened. Um, and we will get that back organized again, we have time to the spring, but I think this, I mean, I guess my comment is, this is a good list. It's not everything we need, but it's a place to start, and it's, can have a real conversation about this, and as a person, I could pick five things on this list that we're gonna win. Um, and get, and then we're gonna make a compelling argument on some of the others.
I mean, if it helps, uh, last year, we put in, it was a one point second, a one point eight, one and eighty-four thousand.
Yeah, okay, I think we're beginning the budget process, and as the budget process begins, just on this report that we have, I put, you know, it'd be my record, they put it out right after the new year, to, to, everybody will look at it.
Yep.
It's out, okay, it's a big number, if the twelve million dollars for this building is in, number one, on, we need a new school. You know, that's like top of the list, you know, we put twelve million dollars into the school, but look, many of our kids are never gonna see this new school. And so it's not about our kids, it's about the right thing for the town and the future generation, all the kids coming behind us. But we also have to properly maintain this.
Yes.
And, and that's why I think this is gonna be a great discussion that we can have about this study, and, you know, what is true, what is true maintenance, what is the, you know, we need to schedule, you know? This is great information to have, but I, I would put that report out, so that people can put into context why we are asking for some of this stuff now.
Yes, yeah.
Sorry, I took too much time.
No, that's, this is, this is gold, um, Mr. K, any comments, I, your, your comments on the overall, or, or noted, in fact, of.
Yeah.
But on this particular prioritization.
I, I just, well, first I would ask, cause every, Mr. Solomon, could you, um, make sure that every member gets a copy of that draft?
So it was in the school facilities report?
Right.
So everyone has that, but I can get, I can get it, I can reissue, no problem.
Okay.
No problem.
So, that said, as far as if we're gonna talk about this list here, um, there's a couple of things, like I, I, I just mentioned, if we're gonna ask for the bus lease, why don't we take the hundred thousand dollar, um, athletics? The mini bus for athletics, hundred thousand dollars, now, do you guys think that we should lease that, because it's not a hundred thousand dollar ask anymore? Um, and Lydia, when you were away, and you said we might go electric three years from now, and so why are we buying a hundred thousand dollar van, makes no sense. It depreciates, it just, it, it makes no sense, so why don't we lease that, so instead of, take the hundred thousand dollar, divide that by thirty-six?
They're gonna ask that.
Oh, that's that. Yeah, so why don't, why don't we, instead of a hundred and fifty-one thousand, ask for a hundred and sixty thousand, a hundred and eighty thousand, so sixty, hundred and seventy-five thousand? And that includes the athletic bus to lease them all together, like, why wouldn't we lease the buses together?
Yeah, what happens if, instead of spending a hundred thousand dollars on that, your mini bus, well, maybe we'll need a mini bus for licensing issues, but you have a nice bus.
Yeah.
Seems like.
Yeah, it's, it's a bus, it's not a car, it's a bus.
I defer to Sue, and I know she's gonna look at the leases.
So I wouldn't personally include that with the bus leases, because then, if they're gonna turn it down, they're gonna turn out, turn.
Well, they're not gonna turn.
They're gonna turn down the lease for all the buses.
So what, can we do two, can we do two?
Well, I know, but, uh, we could put that as a lease, I don't know what.
But if it's, if it's eight, I'm, I'm just doing some quick math here, it's a hundred fifty thousand for eight buses, and it's probably, what, a hundred and sixty-one, a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for nine buses?
Right.
But the mini bus doesn't need a bus driver license.
I was gonna say, she's a mini bus, non-CDL.
Yes.
That's, that's the, it's the driver.
So, the coach has been driving.
Which is great.
Yeah, I used to be.
But it could be, it can't be leased, right, it could be leased.
So you're saying lease a mini?
Lease the minivan with the school buses.
Well, I, I mean, I, I, that sounds very illogical, I don't, I disagree.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can find out, say.
So, for the instant purposes, um, knowing that we have to get the town something, maybe we make the bigger ask for the hundred thousand dollars versus one, but we will commit to exploring the option of leasing it.
Right.
And then, you know, it's a reality.
Okay, so we can ask for a hundred thousand or five years at, if, blah, 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 okay.
And then every time you get some of this information on it.
Yeah.
Mr. Sando, anything for you?
I don't think I have anything different to add to the conversation, appreciate how problem solving is going on right now, I also never responded to the original email, so I apologize, but, but this looks good, guys.
Um, and where I, where I said this looks great, I'm very happy to see the, the, um, school bus parking lot on there.
Yeah.
Um, that's a, I assume that's still the Deer Hill solution, that's what we're hoping, we really, we really like that, from a variety of perspectives.
Yeah, so, uh, just, uh, when I was. They are working on it, so I, um, in anticipation of that is our priority, I engaged in my sort of like select people town government thing, I engaged a little bit with the conservation commission to see, what's it gonna take us to do it? Well, you know, what are, what hurdles do we have, things like that, we looked at, we discussed setback lighting, things like that, I kind of went through with several of the members, and said, we're thinking about this, and. There is, there is, from conservation perspective at least, there is not a significant issue with us putting a lot there, which is good news.
That's a big deal, thank you for, thank you for doing that, let's drop that down to a hundred and eighty thousand. This, this looks great to me, I, I entertain a motion to approve the, um, list of priorities and. List of priorities as presented at the meeting with a one caveat of exploration of introducing the mini bus. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Allen, seconds, uh, all in favor? Aye. One, extension, Mr. Collin had to leave for childcare, so, uh, Ms. Ms. Owen, please proceed with this as your, uh, with your list. With that one caveat on the, uh, on the lease of the mini bus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion, just as, before we wrap that up, can we talk about at some point? Before we get into the real discussion about budget, our strategy about our approach to budget. With things that we need, because I think we'll do much better if we have. Uh, some real consensus on. Must have now, future plan, you know, future plans, plan for technology replacement, like these are a couple of things. We need a hundred and thirty five thousand iPads immediately. You know, I think if we have some. Uh, thoughts on. How to. It's going to, right, it's going to be a compromise, the budget process is always a compromise, we should just have some thoughts on what our approach might be.
I like that idea, are you thinking that as a subcommittee meeting or a?
We could start it in a subcommittee, but I think we should, you know, as a whole, everybody.
So as part of that, just in our next meeting, we have a workshop. That will happen here with the principals in terms of position, terrific, looking over the next three years and then we roll into our. Our first sort of voyage of in front of you of the budget, but your point about other thoughts. Because obviously we have a list of improvements that need to happen, you know, uh. You also have, uh, you know, the need for a new building down the road, whatever that might be. Um, and these are all, I think, important conversations, we also have a curriculum review cycle now. That's going to produce the need for curricula. So I, I think, I think you can start that conversation on your next committee meeting, but I think there needs to be more.
Yeah.
Mr. Carr, I, I like your idea, why don't we do this, why don't you and I connect offline with Dr. Sullivan?
Okay.
And figure out the, the best way forward, because you are a wealth of resource and experience on how to best navigate some of these things. And we should definitely take advantage of that.
Glad to help, so, just, you know, also. Okay, our, I plan to go to town meeting, I, I think a robust appearance of the school committee would be. Should we post a meeting, should we get into, if there's a discussion on the floor? That involves any of our items, that requires us to take a vote or something, should we post? I think I recall that other groups post.
Like in their.
Yeah, let's do it. Yeah, just, let's just post.
I, I would actually, I'd feel, I, I would defer to maybe, uh, counsel on that, just to make sure, I, I don't know. If you have to or not, or maybe, maybe town hall.
I have seen what.
If we email Jennifer, should you tell her C A or A, because she has to go through town, the town has rules about it anyway, like I wasn't allowed to post a meeting.
Yeah, let's, let's explore that.
Just make sure, we may not need it, but.
There's three of us there, and we talk.
So the idea is post, do we post the town, I'll find out.
Post it as a public meeting.
Post it as a public.
Wait, and, and honestly, the next, next committee meeting, we're going to go with the budget, right? And that's kind of where we're going to be talking about. Yes, and we have paid kindergarten in there, we have, uh, we have a whole bunch of good stuff. And again, I think this is, this would, um, something for everybody to, you know, kindergarten. So those are the folks that we need to, if we're going to build a new school, that we need to come out, that need to come out, right? We need all these folks to be able to buy into it. And you have to, you know, the, the other thing is, you have to tell the taxpayer that doesn't have kids in the school on why it's important. These are the things, you know, we're coming out for pandemic right now, so we need these resources to get our, to put this all in place. We need these resources to put it in place, so as a subcommittee, we've been working to get these resources. So don't be shocked when you see the number. We threw everything in there. It's not, it's not, and it might be open to other things that we have not asked for in the past, that is necessary in this. Room specialists, math specialists, like you guys did a really good job asking what we really need. And for years, we haven't done that, we haven't, we had, and I, and, you know, I love our teachers, just they, they've been working on. You know, really thin line budgets and, you know, I don't think, I think they need to have the support of the town. And, you know, we, we need to ask for the money, because if you don't ask, they're not going to get it to us. So look forward to the next meeting of talking about budget and, and you'll see all those things that we've all worked on. So, pretty happy to say.
Thank you, everyone.
Just on the town meeting, can we, if it's not too late for the newsletter for this week, can we put an appeal? In the newsletter to encourage the school community, because we do have some budget items on.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Encourage the school community to come to town meeting.
I think the sign's already advertising the town meeting, it's a town thing.
And, you know, honestly, too, going forward, Dr. Sullivan, anytime we're going to talk about issues with parents that. You know, we do have an athletic, um, Steve Tunnie has his athletics, this is something that gives us time, maybe we can. Talk to this community before they talk about the athletics.
Let's do that.
Because I felt like last time I was here to talk about athletics, there was a packed room and I came in here and no one was here. So why can't we add, before that, the school committee would like to address some of our concerns with you parents. We got a whole room of parents that are here not to yell at us.
Yeah.
You know, because the only time we ever get anybody is.
No one's here yelling at us.
Yeah, I know, because there's nothing happening. The only thing happening here, so, so do you like that suggestion? Yeah, so just. Schedule it with, you know, before, Steve's going to be speaking pretty soon, pretty, did he already, no, winter in the. Well, I heard a trim dial, but I think we were talking about next meeting.
Yeah, so see if we can schedule at the same time.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, we're doing on that.
Paul, are you talking about when he does informational night for families?
Yeah. Close information night, yeah.
Not, not Steve coming here and talking, but.
Oh, hey, no, I would say that. I didn't realize you meant that, I, I liked the spirit of it, I just don't know how it would work. I'm just saying, school committee at six thirty, athletics at seven thirty, please go.
Oh, you're saying back to back.
Back to back, yeah.
I thought you meant to get us a slot on his agenda.
Yeah.
Let's, let's think about that.
Yeah, I like, I like the idea. But anytime we can do that, if we have, uh, uh, parents coming in, it's a good time to get them involved, because I.
What you might find is that people just start showing up at seven thirty, but.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
It's worth a shot, because honestly, this year for this budget, I've asked friends of mine to, to put out a flyer that says. You know, go out there and support your kids, like be their voice, so I'm distributing it to every high school parent that I know. Every parent, and I'm going to ask them, listen, we need you to show up, because if you don't show up, you know. And God bless everyone here, especially the volunteers, thank you for, for what you guys do, you're doing God's work and, and thank you. So, I mean, if you can, if we can do all this work, they can show up for one meeting. And we can do it Zoom.
Let's do get back on, on track, on the, on the agenda, we've got a few more agenda items we're going to go. Um, one is transportation, usually Ms. Owen, I think we'll, we'll pause on that. I know that, uh, Mr. Kenny, you and Mr. McCollum wanted to do up to end food service, but given the hour and Mr. McCollum's absence.
Yep.
I have posted, it was front load that in our next agenda.
Okay, front load, that's good, because we're not talking.
We get more, um, parental, um, attention, if that makes sense.
Sounds good.
So, with that, um, Mr. Collins normally does our report at the school facilities committee, I don't think we have a report with the school facilities committee. Uh, we have had the report from the, uh, facility finance subcommittee, are there any other subcommittee reports or liaison reports? To enter into the, for the good of the order. Policy, um, we did have a meeting.
We met as policy.
Yes.
Chair, Chairman Dyke was shocked.
I was, I was.
By the number of policies.
There was a lot of policies.
We are going to now narrow our focus and meet again on thirteen.
Yes, so we are moving forward with the good work of policy committee.
Yes, to continue to align with masks and make sure that we are up to date in our policy binder.
And parents who are still with us and listening, you probably all have read all of the policies, but if you haven't, they're available, you should look at this, there's a lot of policies.
Interactive format.
Uh, and it's actually pretty impressive, um, so that will, um. Include community relations, we're going to school community governance, there are no topics not recently anticipated by me. We have minutes to approve, thank you, Mr. Carr.
Yes. Can, can I just mention, so I.
Yes.
So I want to thank Lydia, who, um, did such a wonderful job in, we are now, I think. Caught up, we can be caught up with these, we, these are a number of the minutes, I want to especially thank our consultant Kathy Bock. Who helps us with these notes, she's superb, and, um. They are inclusive of a lot of things, they are long, but I think it's important that some of these things that we discuss that they're, that they're there, so. Um, this will allow us by taking votes on these, I think it's six minutes tonight or.
Six minutes we have, yes, June twenty second, August tenth, September seventh, September twenty one, November two, and November sixteen. So, um. Please distribute in advance the meeting, uh, we won't take the time now to read them because. But, uh, any concerns, comments, revisions to the minutes? As presented. If none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'd like to move, I'd like to make the motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Carr to approve the minutes, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Second motion taken by Mr. Kearney, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, uh, the motion carries four with, uh, one absence, not extension. Uh, so four out of four, so the motion, approve the minutes is, is carried, we are caught up to minutes. So thank you very much, Mr. Carr, future agenda items, Mr. Kearney, you have two, uh, potential future agenda items. One, uh, potential future agenda is on our over, the twelve million dollars or overall larger asks. Schools pick up, so that is something that we will, uh, look for a position on, and there was one earlier in the meeting that, um. Uh, classic girls softball team and co-op.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, that would be something, yeah.
So.
It'd be something we could handle. Yeah, I just don't think it's fair for Hall, because they're not, they're paying for a coach, and it's really not fair. Yeah, but I wouldn't.
Extra fare for us, though.
Yeah, but, you know, they're a small school too. I, I would also say that, you know, I wouldn't want to look at, like, maybe getting Hall air and asking them, because. We could have freshman JV, because we only have a bus. Yeah, I defer to Steve on that for a few reasons, one is just about the rules.
Yeah, see what you can find out from him. I, you know, I'm, I'm all for having coacid, that's great, I don't want to see us taking Hall's money like we did last year.
Yeah, that decision may have already been made, so I think just more of getting information from Steve.
Yes, that'll be, that'll, that'll be.
Yeah, I know, it's good, good.
Yeah, yeah, uh, any other potential future agenda items?
Um, I, we just, maybe this has been mentioned before, but obviously we have new reading. Curriculum, and I don't know when it would best fit in, but is it, is there like an opportunity coming close to mid-year or whatever? Like a check in on curriculum and rollout and what that looks like, kind of. I guess K through, yeah, yeah. K through, yeah, so what it looks like, K through five, um, I think that, you know, we've talked a lot about. Uh, foundations and integrity and like how does, um, the reader's workshop fit into that? How are we seeing the rollout, how, how, how effective is it, how does it, how, you know, maybe it makes more sense after mid-year benchmarks?
Yeah, maybe, like.
To see.
In February or in.
Yeah, but just kind of, you know, there are only so many meetings.
I know.
So after mid-year benchmarks, can we do, can we have a kind of like an update on reading programs and how?
We talked about doing that at the prior meeting.
Yes, and I just wanted to see reading enough.
Yeah.
So I have.
February, yeah.
So I have four, uh, and this is a, this is the next meeting, but I've got four ideas for future items. Uh, one is, uh, the overall capital requests for our, our buildings. Another one, Mr. Carr, budget process, that may be a next, just expedience, the next, next meeting, we can discuss on that. Um, this sounds curriculum updates, I think I'm summarizing that, maybe it's a little bit more than that, but just.
Yeah, yeah. But specifically like, yeah, so like reading ELA literacy, that.
And then, um, girls softball, and I think.
Fitness center.
Fitness center.
Yeah, I would ask the fitness center, one of the things that's holding us right now is, we've got everything pretty much ready to roll. We just don't know what the process is of finding, because we're going to lease it, so. Doc Sullivan, what do you, what do you think, what do you think we should do as far as fitness?
Let's, let's not have that discussion now, because we're very close to.
No, I know that, but we need, we need that sooner than later, should we just do it in a subcommittee and then bring it? So I think it should be as, buying some facilities, I missed the last one. Yeah, so why don't we, why don't we redo that and then you can, um, um, talk to Lance about what we come up with and what we're going to need. Yeah, I think the timeline is what we're going to need to set.
Yeah, we do have for April vacations.
And I know there are multi-stages.
First, we just got to secure the, get the inventory.
I agree.
Maybe, so sort of three things come to mind, maybe one concession item, which would be maybe in the new year, communication strategy. So we've got big things we've got to sell, like the report and other things, we should maybe have an item about how. What's our strategy about how to do that?
Yeah, we do have a, we also have. Yeah, we have. But it'd be great to have, you know, some, some committee and then bring it up.
And then just at some point, legal strategy and security in executive session.
Security, the session for security, yeah.
Security and, and the other strategy.
I agree, we need to, uh, and, and you would raise that at a prior meeting, that is something that I want to put on the agenda. As you can see, we had a full agenda today, so.
We got lots to do.
So, um, anything else for the good of the order, otherwise I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, because there is no reason to go to executive sessions. Motion? My motion from Mr. Carr, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, good and done, four zero, we are officially adjourned, thank you everyone for watching, we'll do that, we'll see you in a couple weeks, bye.